Good evening and welcome to the 11/28/2017 Regular City Council Meeting. Before we begin the meeting, let me review the procedures for the meeting. The audience is reminded that this is a business meeting of the City Council, therefore clapping, cheering, and outbursts are not permitted. Speakers must complete a request-to-speak form located at the entrance at the Council Chamber. Submit your completed form to either the City Clerk or the Sergeant-at-Arms. When your name has been called, use the microphone at the lectern on the audience's right and state your name and address. If you do not wish to publicly state your street address, you may state only your city or unincorporated Brevard County. Speak to the City Council as a body; do not address the Mayor and City Council members individually. Be mindful at the timer at the front of the room and wrap up your comments before your speaking time ends. The following time limits will generally apply. Speaking times may be varied by the Mayor with the approval of City Council. Public comments, most agenda items, and the consent agenda, up to three minutes. Items designated as a public hearing and petitions, remonstrances, and communications, up to five minutes. An applicant, representative, or person who has legal standing to support or oppose a quasi-d judicial matter will be permitted enough time as reasonably determined by the City Council to create a record before the City Council. These matters generally include: site plan, plat zoning of property, conditional use, variance, building-related permit or appeal, abandon, and vacate requests, annexation, and other applications of law to specific properties. Thank you for joining us this evening, and we'll begin the invocation with Pastor Ken Ellis with the Living Waters Church of God. And if you wish to participate in the invocation, please stand.
Thank you, Mayor. Looks like you have a busy night.
Yeah, please pray.
We're going to start out with the Lord's Prayer for those who would like to join. Me, Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever. Amen. And Father, we recognize you as omnipresent, which means you're here. And we also know that you are omniscient, means you know everything, and that you are omnipotent, that means you can do anything. And we implore you tonight that you will give to us and this council the grace and the strength and the power to perform their duties well and to do it through your grace and through your wisdom, that you have empowered them and blessed them and endowed them. Use them, Lord, bless them, and help them even to make the hard decisions and to be able, Lord, to stand by their convictions. And, Lord, we just know that, God, you're going to bless for the good of your name and especially also for the good of this community, that everything will be done, it will be done for your glory. We ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Ellis. Please join me for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item 3 is roll call, Ms. Weiser.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Minas.
Here.
Councilmember Alfrey.
Here.
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Tim Thomas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Debbie Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Mehan.
Here. Next is, I have no proclamations and presentations, but we do have a presentation of employee service awards.
As you know, each month we stop and recognize employees who have reached significant milestones in their tenure with the City of Melbourne. We have three folks with us tonight, two 20-year awards and one 25-year award. And the first one I'm going to call up is Shanice Alexander from Water Production. Come on down. Shanice is one of those people that works really, really, really hard behind the scenes, keeping our community safe, keeping our drinking water safe. She's a chemistry graduate of University of South Florida, chemistry and natural sciences, I believe. And without her out there doing what she does in the laboratory, we would be in a lot more trouble than we ever get in. And we never get in any trouble with the regulators, thanks to the good work that Shanice and her people out there do very quietly, almost under the radar. We don't worry about them because they're really, really on top of things. She's won numerous awards, former Services of Business Award winner, member of her local professional, or her Florida Professional Society, so we're really proud to have her, and we thank you, Shanice, tonight for 20 years of service for the city. And the Mayor's got a little award for you. On the front, we're going to keep you for a minute, and we'll take a group picture here in just a second. Our second, Jennifer Chase from Financial Services, who is our payroll and pension manager. She gets to work with all those happy people who are on their way out, on their retirements and their deferred retirements and all those details. And actually, our payroll manager, too, has carried a huge load in the last couple of years as we've gone through with our hurricanes and all the emergency pay and the special duty pay and all the complications of that, that now, I guess that's part of the annual cycle. And so, none the worse for wear, though, I can see for that. Has volunteered to serve on our Employee Benefits Committee. I think the best thing that I can say about Jennifer, she's, I think, to some degree, a utility worker for us. Her boss, the Finance Director there in the front row, says she is the kind of person that every other department would love to have, but they can't have her. With that, thank you for your 20 years of service to the city, and Mayor has some gifts Our third, 25 years of service, Carrie, come on down. Carrie Sargent from Police Support Services in our Communications Section, has been a shift supervisor in Communications and Dispatch, has done work with the regional FDLE related to Dispatch work and Communications, has been an incident team leader for us. He does medical training for us, I guess, in a number of different types of fields, CPR, pathogens, emergency casualty care, and some other stuff that he holds his hand up to do. I will say personally, we all owe him and my cohorts among the management team here because when we take over his building during a hurricane for emergency operations, he's one of the people that really makes sure we're taken care of. And they were always good hosts to us over there, and I know he does. None of that's really his job at all, but always with a smile and always, even though he probably doesn't get any sleep at all during the whole thing. So Carrie, for 25 years of service to Melbourne PD and the City of Melbourne, thank you. Mayor has some gifts for you. Go on, come on down. We'd like a group picture. You three get right in the middle.
Council, what is your pleasure?
Mayor, I move for approval of the minutes of November 14, 2017, regular meeting.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Ms. Moore for approval of the minutes of November 14, 2017, regular meeting. Second by Mr. Thomas. Discussion. Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item number six is the City Manager's Report, Mr. McNeese.
Thank you, Mayor Mehan. You have our monthly report on activities, city operations. I'll be happy to take any questions there. The only other thing I want to bring up verbally is, in a little bit, this is old news, but I can't help myself, I have to say it again out loud. Last Tuesday, the Board of County Commissioners approved an inter-local agreement by which the City of Melbourne will take ownership of the Babcock Street right away, will get a half a million dollars from the county, direct contribution towards the construction of, the reconstruction of Babcock Street, to which you're going to add 1.3 million dollars approximately from the Babcock CRA, and we are going to get Babcock Street repaved.
Good news.
The city engineer says it might not quite be done by the New Year's Day, but we will bring back some further information about the time. But actually, it is entirely possible it could be under construction in the first half of the new year, so before summer, it could actually be under construction. And it's a fairly short timeframe, given the methodology that's going to be used. And so I think it's fairly certain that during 2018, that project will probably be finished. And that'll be a big deal, and so I couldn't resist saying it tonight. Thank you very much for all of your direction and support as we got there with the county. They were very cooperative and worked with us every step of the way. I think they wanted to get it done as much as we did, and so it's been a great mutual effort. It's nice to see that kind of cooperative spirit on both sides, and that's what it took to get it done.
Yes, wonderful. Thank you, Mr. McNeese, because that's good news. Anything else for Mr. McNeese? All right, seeing none, we have public comments.
Actually, Mayor, if we could back up to item six, staff would like to ask City Council to add item 31.1 to the agenda, and that's relating to our water main crossing at the 192 Causeway.
Okay. Also, what I want to do is, if there's no objection with council, I'd like to move the airport, item number 19, up to, starting with new business. So we'll do that. All right, public comments, anyone sign up for public comments? All right, no, I'll close the public comments. We'll go into item eight, unfinished business, ordinance number 2017-53, this is second reading, Ms. Allison Dolly.
Yes, ma'am. An ordinance of the City of Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, relating to vacation of an approximately two-foot-wide by five-foot-long portion of a five-foot-wide public utility and drain easement. Located on the west side of 1882 Quail Trail, as shown on the plat of Quail Village Homes, is recorded in Plat Book 34, page 75, public records of Brevard County, Florida, making findings, providing an effective date, and providing an adoption schedule.
All right, thank you, Ms. Dolly. This is under engineering, Ms. Jenny Lamb. Welcome.
Oh, thank you. During the first reading of the ordinance, council asked for additional information about the type of generator that the owners intend to install. So we did find out it is a natural gas generator. It is a 22-kilowatt generator. We also looked into what the noise was to be generated, and the decibels at an exercise, just so when you're running it, is 58 decibels, dB, and at normal operating load, it's at 67. So our code allows, in residential areas, a noise level of 60 dB during the, between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM. And it goes down to 55 from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. But the city code also says during power outage due to a natural disaster, including storms and hurricanes and so forth, that those decibel levels are exempt. So I did want to point that out, that we had done that research. Additionally, we contacted the next-door neighbor, and they had no objections to the placement of this generator. So I did want to follow up in that regard to the questions that were asked last time. And so I recommend approval of ordinance number 2017-53.
Thank you, Ms. Lamb. Any questions for Ms. Lamb? Thanks for the research, that's great. All right, so council, what is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. It's, disclosures are required. Any disclosures?
Aye.
Public hearing, do I have any sign-up sheets? No, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, ma'am. Request action, recommend approval of ordinance number 2017-53.
Second. I have a motion for approval of ordinance number 2017-53 by Mr. Thomas, second by Vice Mayor Thomas. Discussion. Seeing none, this is second reading, it's going to require a roll call vote.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Minas.
Aye.
Councilmember Alfrey.
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Councilmember Tim Thomas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Debbie Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Mehan.
I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item number nine is ordinance number 2017-54, Murphy Oil Sea Store, Ms. Allison Dolly.
An ordinance of the City of Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, amending the official zoning map as it relates to the general zoning ordinance number 2005-120, by granting a conditional use to allow the redevelopment of a convenience store with gas pumps on a 0.88-plus-or-minus-acre property, Zone CCP, commercial parkway with a conditional use for an automotive service station convenience store, located on the north side of Sarno Road, west of Wickham Road, 3006 Sarno Road, providing for site plan approval, providing for conditions of approval, providing that the conditional use granted herein may be revoked by City Council if the conditions of approval are not met, providing that the property shall be designated on the official zoning map by the symbol CCP, providing an effective date and providing an adoption schedule.
Thank you, Ms. Dolly. This is under community development, Ms. Cindy Dittmer.
Yes, staff doesn't have anything further to add upon second reading.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Dittmer? Seeing none, this is, disclosures are required. Any disclosures? Seeing none, this is a public hearing, do I have any sign-up sheets? No, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council. What is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Ms. Lopez?
Recommend approval of ordinance number 2017-54 with SP 2017-09, based upon the findings and the conditions contained in the Planning and Zoning Board memorandum.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for approval of ordinance number 2017-54 with SP 2017-09 by Ms. Lopez, second by Mr. Alfrey. Discussion.
Mayor.
Ms. Lopez?
Yes, I frequently go to that gas station, and that convenience store definitely needs a big makeover, so I totally support this.
Yes, definitely. All right, any other questions? All right, so this is going to require a roll call vote.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Minas.
Aye.
Councilmember Alfrey.
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Councilmember Tim Thomas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Debbie Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Mehan.
And I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item number 10 is ordinance number 2017-55, Southampton Lakes, Ms. Allison Dolly.
An ordinance of the City of Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, amending the official zoning map as it relates to the general zoning ordinance number 2005-120, by changing the zoning classification from R2, 12, and multiple-family dwelling medium-density district, and C1, neighborhood commercial, to PUD, planned unit development, on 42.67-plus-or-minus acres of property located on the northwest corner of Snicole Avenue and Dairy Road, providing for preliminary development plan approval, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date, and providing an adoption schedule.
Thank you, Ms. Dolly. This is under community development, Ms. Cindy Dittmer.
Yes, nothing further to add on second reading.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Dittmer? Seeing none, this is, disclosures are required. Any disclosures?
No.
Seeing none, this is a public hearing, I have no sign-up sheets, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. What is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Move for approval of ordinance number 2017-55 with SP 2017-12, based upon the findings and conditions contained in the Planning and Zoning Board memorandum.
Second.
I have a motion for approval of item number 10, stated in council's package by Vice Mayor Thomas, second by Ms. Minas. Discussion. Seeing none, this is going to require a roll call vote.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Minas.
Aye.
Councilmember Alfrey.
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Councilmember Tim Thomas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Debbie Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Mehan.
And I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item number 11, ordinance number 2017-56, Melbourne Downtown CRA Redevelopment Plan Amendment, Ms. Allison Dolly.
An ordinance of the City of Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, relating to the Melbourne Downtown Redevelopment Plan, making findings, amending Chapter 20 of the city code entitled "Community Planning and Development," amending Section 20-64 Adoption, providing for the extension of the downtown Melbourne public-private development program within the redevelopment plan, providing for severability and interpretation, providing an effective date, and providing an adoption schedule.
Thank you, Ms. Dolly. This is under community development, Ms. Cindy Dittmer.
Yes, staff doesn't have anything further to add on second reading.
All right, any questions for Ms. Dittmer? Seeing none, this is a public hearing, do I have any sign-up sheets? I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council. What is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Ms. Minas.
I move for approval of ordinance number 2017-56.
Second.
I have a motion for approval of ordinance number 2017-56 by Ms. Minas, second by Vice Mayor Thomas. Discussion. Seeing none, this is going to require a roll call vote.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Minas.
Aye.
Councilmember Alfrey.
Nay.
Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Councilmember Tim Thomas.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Debbie Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Mehan.
I vote aye, and the motion passes. We are now into new business, I've moved item number 19, which is Resolution Number It now is going to become number 12, Ms. Weiser. Is that what we're going to, it will become? I moved it ahead of the other items.
No, ma'am, it'll remain item 19.
Okay.
You're just moving it out of order.
Okay, all right. This is a resolution providing for a budget transfer from prior year surplus of $640,000 to the airport fund operating budget. Ms. Marilyn Hively, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
Hey, I have progressed from my scooter.
Oh, yes, that's right.
Congratulations. At the October meeting of the Melbourne Airport Authority, the board approved an increase of the operating budget of $640,000. The increase, as you know, also must be approved by City Council in order for the increase to be put into effect. The increase stems from the airport's air service incentive program that we offer, which offers $200,000 for each new route that an airline brings for new service to Melbourne. That, it also has a reset provision for a current, for current service that they're current, that's being offered to Melbourne. Porter Airlines recently announced their intention to provide new nonstop service between Melbourne and Windsor, which is just outside of Detroit, and also Melbourne and Ottawa. And they will also continue to provide the nonstop service between Toronto. So this program is applicable to all three programs for a total of $600,000. Additionally, the airport is a customs user fee airport, which means the airport reimburses customs for the agents that process passengers that come through the federal inspection station. The airport budget for fiscal year 2017-18 included customs fees for the Toronto flight. The Ottawa flight is coming from an airport that has global entry, which means that all the passengers will go through customs in Canada. But we do need to have extra customs agents to process the Windsor flights, and we estimate that will cost about $40,000. The first flights, just for your information, are scheduled to arrive in Melbourne on December 16, which is coming right up. So we recommend an increase of $640,000, which will be funded from our prior year surplus.
Thank you, Ms. Hively. Any questions for Ms. Hively? All right, seeing none, okay, so council, what is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Thomas?
Recommend approval of the transfer from prior year surplus of $640,000 to the airport fund operating budget.
Second.
All right, we need to, it's a Resolution Number 3694, that's what we need to approve.
Gotcha. So request approval of Resolution 3694.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for approval of Resolution Number 3694 by Mr. Thomas, second by Mr. Alfrey. Discussion. Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item number 12, all right, is the contract award to Bussin-Mayer Engineering Group, Inc., for professional engineering services as a continuing consultant, Ms. Jenny Lamb.
At the last council meeting, council authorized staff to negotiate the professional engineering continuing contract with Bussin-Mayer Engineering Group. Bussin-Mayer Engineering Group was the selection committee's top choice to provide these professional engineering services to the city. I just want to point out that this contract does not have a dollar value appointed to it because there are individual task orders for every task that is worked on. So if we do a signal project, or a water main project, or a lift station project, each one of those either comes to council for council approval, or they go to the city manager for city manager approval based on the procurement thresholds that are established by code. So the term of the contract is for three years with the option of two, two-year renewals. And staff recommends the approval of the continuing contract with Bussin-Mayer Engineering Group of Merritt Island, Florida.
Thank you, Ms. Lamb. Any questions for Ms. Lamb?
Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Lopez?
Yes, we've used them continuously. So we, the city's very happy with the service that they're providing for us.
We have used them for the last five years, and we have been very pleased with their services. And the few minor areas where we've, we have not, I shouldn't say not pleased, but where we've had some minor issues, they addressed those during the presentation for, when they did, when they did their presentation to, for the shortlist, to the selection committee. And the selection committee consisted of the project managers that review the projects, and so there are design engineers. And we have seen with Bussin-Mayer Engineering Group, we have less change orders during the construction of a project. They're much more thorough during the design part, and so that tends to cause less change orders, which we're happy about that.
Yes, I'm very impressed with this contract. City did a good job obtaining it.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, council, what is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Ms. Moore.
I move for approval of the continuing contract for professional consulting services between the City of Melbourne and Bussin-Mayer Engineering Group Incorporated, Merritt Island, Florida.
Second.
I have a motion for approval of item number 12, as stated in council's package, by Ms. Moore, second by Mr. Alfrey. Discussion. Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item 13 is ordinance number 2017-63, Highline Apartments LLC, Ms. Allison Dolly.
An ordinance of the City of Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, relating to the vacation of a temporary parking easement created as a condition of Ordinance Number 2015-48, A&amp;V Number 359. Located south of the intersection of New Haven Avenue and Livingston Street and west of Grant Place 635 East New Haven Avenue, as shown on the plat of Hallwood Place, as recorded in Plat Book 2, page 33A, public records of Brevard County, Florida, making findings, providing for a condition of approval, providing an effective date, and providing an adoption schedule.
All right, thank you, Ms. Dolly. This is under engineering, Ms. Jenny Lamb.
As Allison pointed out in the title of the ordinance, or in the reading of the ordinance, this temporary parking easement was created as a condition of Ordinance 2015-48, and that ordinance was for the abandon and vacation, or abandonment and vacation of the parking easement, which was a permanent parking easement. It was set that, that this temporary parking easement was set to terminate upon the applicant receiving their building permits for their project. The applicant is requesting to vacate earlier than that, and that is to assist in securing financing for the project. In February of this past year, the city agreed to consider the applicant's request to vacate this temporary easement earlier, and that was part of the master redevelopment agreement for the Highline redevelopment project. There is one condition to this ordinance that must be met within one year of the date that the ordinance is adopted, and that, that is, condition is that the conveyance of the transfer parcel, as defined in the Highline Transfer Agreement, must be complete. as defined in the Highline Transfer Agreement, must be complete, completed, and that must be done within one year of the, of the adoption of this ordinance. Staff recommends approval of ordinance number 2017-63.
Thank you, Ms. Lamb. Any questions for Ms. Lamb? All right, seeing none. This is, disclosures are required. Any disclosures?
No.
Seeing none, this is a public hearing. I do have a sign up sheet. Mr. Zimmerman.
Just to answer any questions.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, council, what is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Ms. Minus.
I move for approval of ordinance number 2017-63.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for approval of ordinance number 2017-63 by Ms. Minus, second by Ms. Moore. Discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose.
Nay.
I vote aye and the motion passes. Item number 14 is Resolution Number 3690. All right, let me, okay, this is, item number 14. All right, Water and Sewer Capital Improvement Fund appropriations for fiscal year 2018, CIP projects. This is under Financial Services. Mr. Jeff Towne, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, this action is requesting that you appropriate funds that are already budgeted within the Water and Sewer Fund. We've placed them there as part of your regular fiscal 17, 18 budget process. What we're asking you to do tonight is to take the funds that were budgeted and funded and move them into the individual capital projects so that Ralph and his crew can get started on the projects. You've reviewed all the projects as part of the CIP, which we've attached in your packet this evening. This is more of a housekeeping item. I know that sounds weird for $10,200,000, but it really is a simple housekeeping item of asking you to take and authorize the resolution, which will take the money out of the Water and Sewer Fund and put it in all the individual capital project funds. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Towne. Any questions for Mr. Towne? All right, seeing none. Council, what is your pleasure? Mayor. Vice Mayor Thomas.
I move for approval of Resolution Number 3690.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for approval of Resolution Number 3690 by Vice Mayor Thomas, second by Ms. Minus. Discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye and the motion passes.
Thank you.
Item number 15 is council action on St. John's Heritage Parkway Ellis Road Utility Improvement Project Number 34617. Ms. Jenny Lamb.
Now that the money is in the projects, I want to spend it.
Yes.
Good girl. So, this agenda item is for utility work by highway contractor agreement with Florida Department of Transportation, which I like to call FDOT, and would make this presentation much shorter if I continue to call them that, in the amount of $1,540,000, and a utility work by highway contractor agreement at FDOT's expense. And this is for the St. John's Heritage Parkway Ellis Road Utility Improvements. As you recall, I think back in the summer, we came to you and asked for an agreement with DOT to start the design of this project. The design is, it's probably, it's between 60 and 90% complete. The DOT is doing property acquisition right now. They hope to be done, completed with both the design and the property acquisition, no later than the beginning of May of next year. And they also hope to bid the project by July of next year. So, in order to commit our funds for this project and to, to provide assurance that they are, you know, putting this in the design and we have the funding set aside for the utility work, both of these agreements are needed. There are two different agreements. The one that is for at our expense, at the city's expense, is for the new water main and the sewer force main at the interchange, and that's going to get us across the interstate to serve the properties that are west of the interstate. The utility work by highway contractor agreement at FDOT expense, that is for water line that is already existing at the John Rhodes intersection, and they will have to move the water line for drainage work, and so that will be done at their expense. But we need an agreement so that they can work on our water line. This also, to approve both of these agreements, FDOT requires a resolution. So, this is a two-part action item. The first one would be to approve the utility work by highway contractor agreement with FDOT in the amount of $1,540,000, and a utility work by highway contractor agreement at FDOT's expense with the Florida Department of Transportation for the St. John's Heritage Parkway Ellis Road Utility Improvements. And then the second action item would be to approve Resolution 3691, and that is authorizing the city manager to sign that.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lamb. Any questions for Ms. Lamb? All right, seeing none. We'll, I'll take two separate motions on item 15A. Council, what is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Mr. Elfry.
Approval of the utility work by highway contractor agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation in the amount of $1,540,000, and a utility work by highway contractor agreement at FDOT expense, with the Florida Department of Transportation for the St. John's Heritage Parkway Ellis Road Utility Improvements, project number 34617.
Second. All right, I have a motion for approval of item 15A, as stated in council's package, by Mr. Elfry, second by Ms. Lopez. Discussion? Seeing, oh.
No, I just want to say, this being in my district, I'm really excited to get this, this done. This is going to really relieve traffic, but I'm very happy about this.
All right. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye and the motion passes. Item 15B, council, what is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Mr. Elfry.
Recommend approval Resolution Number 3691.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for approval of Resolution Number 3691 by Mr. Elfry, second by Mr. Thomas. Discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye and the motion passes. Item number 16 is Amendment 1 to the Infrastructure Solution Services LLC Professional Engineering Services Contract for the Design of the Grant Street Water Reclamation Facility, WRF Improvement Project. This is under Engineering, Ms. Jenny Lamb.
I wanted to start off with what the purpose of this project is, and what it will do for the city. And the main purpose is to upgrade the existing old technology to new technology, replace out of date processes, processes, excuse me, with new ones, and replace equipment that has exceeded its useful life. In addition, we will demolish and remove the old process units and equipment. The Infrastructure Solution Services has already, when we awarded the contract to them last year, it was at the December 13th, 2016, that the initial contract was for the, the engineering evaluation, the preparation of a basis of design report, and the preparation of the preliminary engineering report. Staff worked very closely with them to, to, to get us to this preliminary engineering stage, and we are ready to, to move forward with the construct, or designing the construction portion of the project and having final construction plans. The goal with this will be to put the project out to bid once those plans are complete. I did want to also point out that a component of this project is reliant on the city, and I shouldn't say reliant, but it depends on if the city receives a Save Our Indian River Lagoon grant, and that would be to provide increased nutrient removals. As it is, the plant will be, is designed to meet the current Florida Department of Environmental Protection standards. We meet those, those criteria. But in, if we do additional treatment, then we can receive additional funding from, through the Save Our Indian River Lagoon. And the reason it's eligible is that is for our reused water, our reclaimed water, and by putting less nutrients out in our reclaimed water, that's less nutrients that will in turn make their way back to the lagoon. And so, I point that out because if we do not receive that grant, it will reduce this contract by a little over $100,000. And we should, we will be applying for that project in January or February, and we should hear back from them fairly quickly if that's the case. So, we will move forward with the design portion, and once we hear, if we get that, we will work on that component of the design. So, we recommend approval of Amendment Number 1 to the Professional Engineering Services Contract with Infrastructure Solution Services LLC of Melbourne, Florida, in the amount of $989,000 for the Grant Street Water Reclamation Facility Improvements.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lamb. Any questions for Ms. Lamb? Seeing none. Council, what is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Ms. Minus.
I move for approval of Amendment Number 1 to the Professional Engineering Services Contract with Infrastructure Solution Services LLC, Melbourne, Florida, in the amount of $989,000 for the Grant Street WRF Improvements, project number 33516.
Second. All right, I have a motion for approval of item number 16, as stated in council's package, by Ms. Minus, second by Vice Mayor Thomas. Discussion? Yeah, Mr. Elfry.
Yes, Mayor. I was out there the last couple weeks, and I'll tell you, those guys out there, ladies and gentlemen, do a great job. This is a great project. If we can pull nutrients out of our lagoon and our reclaimed water. But I just want to say, it's kind of amazing when you go out there. It looks like old diesel machines working, and it's working on overtime. But we did a great job during the storm. I want to give kudos to our staff for, for, with, with the issues that we didn't have. But I really support this project in helping overall clean up the lagoon.
Ditto on that. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye and the motion passes. Item 17 is the Consent Agenda A through K. Nothing was pulled. So, council, what is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Ms. Moore.
I move for approval of the Consent Agenda A through K.
Second.
I have a motion for approval of the Consent Agenda A through K by Ms. Moore, second by Vice Mayor Thomas. Discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye and the motion passes. And we'll skip 18, we'll skip 19. That was done. Item number 20, Resolution Number 36. Okay, so let me get to that. 95. We have a lot. All right, here we go. Number 20, okay. Resolution Number 3695 by Public Works and Utilities. I guess you're going to have to state your name.
Jennifer Spagnoli, Utilities Engineer.
Welcome.
This is a request for approval of Resolution 3695, granting a 30-year water franchise agreement with the town of Indian Atlantic. This new agreement will extend the con, the agreement will extend until October 31st of 2047, and we recommend approval of Resolution 3695.
Thank you, Ms. Spagnoli. Any questions for Ms. Spagnoli? Seeing none.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Lopez, no problem.
Will they be paying the same rate as the City of Melbourne residents?
If, no. There is a, I think, a 4%.
Tire.
Fee for anybody who's outside of the city limits.
So, they'll be paying more then? Is that correct?
Yes.
But I'm not sure if 4%, is it 4%?
It's a different rate structure, but I don't offhand the difference.
Yeah, I think I do know. I think reading our packet, it was 10% more, but 4% came back to us or something for the administrative part.
Well, they have an additional utility fee that they also place, which is the 10%, and yes, 4% comes back.
Still a good deal for water.
Yep.
So, they'll be paying more then?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, council. Let's see, no public hearing. Okay, so what is your pleasure?
Mayor. Vice Mayor Thomas. For approval of Resolution Number 3695.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for approval of Resolution Number 3695 by Vice Mayor Thomas. All right, who's, Minus, okay, and second by Ms. Minus. Discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye and the motion passes. All right, thank you. Item number 21 is, all right, let me, all right, is a council action item under Engineering, Ms. Jenny Lamb.
This is a contract award to Harvard Jolly Incorporated for professional consulting services required for the Police Department Space Needs Analysis and New Facility Design Project. This is the first part of the, of the design of the overall new Police Department facility. And this first phase encompasses a space needs assessment, a site evaluation, cost estimates, and project schedules for the new facility. This is going to be done in 14 weeks, so it'll be pretty intensive for us to get this done, and for us to be working with staff, with the police staff, and then Harvard Jolly is, is ready to go with this. And the contract amount is for $115,550. And so far, dealings with Harvard Jolly have been very pleasant, and I say that, they, and they are ready to go. They, they really wanted us to get this on this agenda so that they could kick off the meetings. They were concerned about the holidays, and they really wanted to get this going and make sure that we didn't have some of the staff on, on holiday, or on vacations. And so, they, they're ready to get us moving on this project. So, I recommend approval of the Professional Architectural Consulting Services Contract with Harvard Jolly Incorporated of Orlando, Florida, and an amount not to exceed $115,550 for the Police Department Space Needs Analysis and New Facility Design. And I, I forgot to point out on this one, that there could be a decrease in the amount of the, of the amount of the contract if we only evaluate three sites instead of five sites. So, staff is doing some initial review of sites, so we can try to limit that so that we can get the price down a little bit more.
Oh, very good, Ms. Lamb. Thank you. All right, any questions for Ms. Lamb? Mr. Elfry.
Can we get a gun range in the new police department? I mean, I got to put it out there, being an old cop.
A gun range?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. Think about it.
Like Frogbone?
Makes sense.
We got, we got to run all over the county now to try to shoot and qualify.
Where do you go to?
Well, I mean, Frogbone, Frogbone, Palm Bay.
Palm Bay.
And the sheriff?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's still flooded.
Still flooded.
Mm-hmm.
And you know, even a small, few, four, four or five range that we could train our people in-house. Just a thought.
Madam Mayor.
I got Mr. McNeese. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, and this is for Mr. McNeese. Now, when y'all went through this last episode with the, with the hurricane, obviously, we've got possible new construction coming up. So, after y'all did your after-action report, kind of doing a closeout of the, of your EOC there, did y'all identify kind of the space that you think you're going to need in a new building, and also where would be a good place maybe for calm drops, that sort of kind of thing? Because that will really help you as y'all go forward with this consultant.
This will certainly be a part of, that will certainly be a part of this conversation, yes, where we've identified that that's one of our real deficiencies in this, ultimately that building where our current EOC is will go away. So, that has to be built into this, or it has to be accommodated in some other way. So, it absolutely will be part of that conversation. Councilman Elfry, I was just going to say, we appreciate your help, but I don't think the chief's going to need any help of building his wish list. I think it'll probably be, you know, he'll do just fine, but we appreciate the assistance there.
He smiled though. He, I think he liked it.
Right. And any other comments? No, seeing none. Council, what is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Ms. Moore.
I move for approval of Professional Architectural Consulting Services Contract with Harvard Jolly Incorporated of Orlando, Florida, in the amount not to exceed $115,550 for the Police Department Space Needs Analysis and the New Facility Design, project number 10317.
Second. All right, I have a motion for approval of item number 21 in council's package by Ms. Moore, second by Mr. Elfry. Discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye and the motion passes. Item number 22 is ordinance number 2017-57, ordinance number 2017-58, ordinance number 2017-59, Reba Floyd and Samuel Harbor Properties. We will, I'll have Ms. Dolly read all the ordinances, and we'll vote separately.
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance Number 2017-57. An ordinance of the City of Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, providing for the annexation of 3.08 plus minus, plus or minus acres of property located south of Lake in the Woods Drive, east of Stack Boulevard, and west of Babcock Street, 316 and 328 North Lakeside Drive, providing for the extension of the corporate limits and boundaries thereof, providing an effective date, and providing an adoption schedule. Ordinance Number 2017-58. An ordinance of the City of Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida relating to the comprehensive planning, making findings, amending Appendix D, Chapter 4, Section 4.04 of the city code, amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan by establishing a low-density residential future land use classification on 3.08 plus or minus acres of property located south of the Lake of the Woods, Lake in the Woods Drive, east of Stack Boulevard, and west of Babcock Street, 316 and 328 North Lakeside Drive, providing an effective date, and providing an an adoption schedule. Ordinance number 2017-59. An ordinance of the City of Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, amending the official zoning map as it relates to the general zoning, ordinance number 2005-120, by establishing an REU, Rural Estate Use Zoning District, on 3.08 plus or minus acres of property located south of Lake in the Woods Drive, east of Stack Boulevard, and west of Babcock Street, 316 and 328 North Lakeside Drive, providing an effective date and providing an adoption schedule.
All right, thank you, Ms. Dolly. This is under Community Development, Ms. Cindy Dimmer.
Yes, these are the first readings of ordinances for the annexation, the establishment of a low-density residential future land use, and the establishment of REU zoning on a total of 3.08 acres of property. The property is located on the south side of Lake in the Woods Drive, just west of Babcock Street on the south end of the city limits. The request is for the annexation of two lots that total the 3.08 acres. These properties are currently located in a very small enclave that is unincorporated in Brevard County, and they currently have a residential six future land use and a rural residential zoning currently on them. There are two homes located, one home on each lot, and the owners of these properties desire to gain city water service. There was one additional property owner to the very south, the one that's in blue on the map here, and they declined to annex into the city. So that will continue as one small enclave in that area. The request is for a low-density residential future land use and RE zoning, which is very similar to the existing county designations. And once this, these properties are annexed, they'll be located in Council District 3. The Planning and Zoning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of these requests, and staff would recommend approval of ordinance number 2017-57, ordinance 2017-58, and ordinance 2017-59, all based on the findings contained in the Planning and Zoning Board memorandum.
Thank you, Ms. Dimmer. Any questions for Ms. Dimmer? All right, seeing none, disclosures are required, any disclosures?
Nope.
This is a public hearing, do I have any sign-up sheets? None, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to council, and we will vote separately on items A, B, and C.
Mayor.
Ms. Minas.
I move for approval of ordinance number 2017-57, based upon the findings contained in the Planning and Zoning Board memorandum.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for approval of ordinance number 2017-57 by Ms. Minas, second by Vice Mayor Thomas. Discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye, and the motion passes.
Mayor.
Ms. Minas.
I move for approval of ordinance number 2017-58, based on the findings contained in the Planning and Zoning Board memorandum.
Second.
I have a motion for approval of item, of ordinance number 2017-58 by Ms. Minas, second by Vice Mayor Thomas. Discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye, and the motion passes.
Mayor.
Ms. Minas.
I move for approval of ordinance number 2017-59, based upon the findings contained in the Planning and Zoning Board memorandum.
Second.
I have a motion for approval of ordinance number 2017-59 by Ms. Minas, second by Vice Mayor Thomas. Discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item number 23 is ordinance number 2017-60, ordinance number 2017-61, ordinance number Brian Amos, Ms. Allison Dolly.
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance number 2017-60. An ordinance of the City of Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, providing for the annexation of 0.26 plus or minus acres of property located on the west side of Easy Street, approximately 400 feet north of Trimble Road, 189 Easy Street, providing for the extension of the corporate limits and boundaries thereof, providing an effective date and providing an adoption schedule. Ordinance number 2017-61. An ordinance of the City of Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, relating to comprehensive planning, making findings, amending Appendix D, Chapter 4, Section 4.04 of the City Code, amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan by establishing a low-density residential future land use classification on 0.26 plus or minus acres of property located on the west side of Easy Street, approximately 400 feet north of Trimble Road, 189 Easy Street, providing an effective date and providing an adoption schedule. Ordinance number 2017-62. An ordinance of the City of Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, amending the official zoning map as it relates to the general zoning ordinance number 2005-120, by establishing an R1A single-family low-density residential zoning district on a 0.26 plus or minus acres of property located on the west side of Easy Street, approximately 400 feet north of Trimble Road, 189 Easy Street, providing an effective date and providing an adoption schedule.
Thank you, Ms. Dolly. This is under Community Development, Ms. Cindy Dimmer.
Yes, these are the first readings of ordinances for the annexation, the establishment of low-density residential future land use, and the establishment of R1A zoning on a .26 acre property. The property is located on the west side of Easy Street, just north of Trimble Road. This property is currently surrounded by the City of Melbourne, it's a small individual enclave of itself. The site's currently designated with a residential six future land use and RU113 zoning in the county. There is currently a single-family home located on the lot, and the applicant desires to receive city water service. The request for the low-density future land use and the R1A zoning is consistent with the existing county designations that are currently on the property. And once annexed into the city, this property will be located in Council District 5. The Planning and Zoning Board did vote unanimously to recommend approval of this request, and staff would recommend approval ordinance number 2017-60, ordinance number 2017-61, and ordinance number 2017-62, all based on the findings contained in the Planning and Zoning Board memorandum.
Thank you, Ms. Dimmer. Any questions for Ms. Dimmer? Seeing none, disclosures are required, any disclosures?
No.
All right, seeing none, this is a public hearing, do I have any sign-up sheets? No, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council, and what is your pleasure? We will vote separately.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Thomas.
Recommend approval of ordinance number 2017, 2017-60, based on the findings contained in the Planning and Zoning Board memorandum.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for approval of ordinance number 2017-60 by Mr. Thomas, second by Mr. Elfrid. Discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item 23B, council, what is your pleasure? Ms. Lopez.
Recommend approval of ordinance number 2017-61, based on the findings contained in the Planning and Zoning Board memorandum.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for approval of item 23B, ordinance number 2017-61 by Ms. Lopez, second by Mr. Elfrid. Discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item 23C, council, what is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Ms. Moore.
I move for approval of ordinance number 2017-62Z, um, dash 2017 dash 1264, public ordinance.
Wait a minute. Item 23C, ordinance number 2017 dash 62.
Yes. Okay. See, I read the lower part of it also.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, that's what we need.
An ordinance establishing an RA1 single-family low-density residential district zoning.
All right.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for approval of ordinance number 2017-62, based on the findings contained in the Planning and Zoning Board memorandum by Ms. Moore, second by Vice Mayor Thomas. Discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item 24 is ordinance number 2017-64, the Paramount Condominiums, formerly the Meridian Riverfront Condominiums. Ms. Allison Dolly.
Yes, an ordinance of the City of Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, providing for the repeal of ordinance number 2011-37, amending the official zoning map as it relates to the general zoning ordinance number 2005-120, by granting a conditional use to allow building height of 100 feet, an additional 52 feet of height, providing for approval of a substantial change to a previously approved site plan to construct a 100-foot-high, 72-unit, multiple-family condominium development on 2.9 plus or minus acres located on the east side of US Highway 1, north of Hibiscus Boulevard, providing for conditions of approval, providing that the conditional use granted herein may be revoked by City Council if the conditions of approval are not met, providing that the property shall be designated on the official zoning map by the symbol CR3, providing an effective date and providing an adoption schedule.
Thank you, Ms. Dolly. This is under Community Development, Ms. Cindy Dimmer.
Yes, this is the first reading of an ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a building height of 100 feet with site plan approval to allow the construction of two 100-foot-high multifamily condominium buildings on 2.9 acres on property zone CR3. The property is located on the east side of US 1, north of Hibiscus Boulevard. Back in 2011, City Council did approve a conditional use in a site plan on this property to allow two condominium buildings at a height of 100 feet, and it was to allow 85 units. Since that time, the construction plans have been revised to reduce the number of units to 72 units, to also shift the condominium buildings towards US 1, and to add an additional, two additional garage structures in the front parking lot area. So these are substantial changes to the site plan, that's why this is coming back before City Council, because it tripped those thresholds for the, for the substantial change. The proposed changes with the 72 units will now reduce the overall density of the project to 25 units per acre. As you can see on the site plan here, the two yellow buildings here are the condominium buildings with a pool and recreation building in the middle. The two blue boxes are the new parking structures, they're one-level, one-story parking structures that are located in the front. And the gray area to the left there, that is the improved area of Bon Air that the developer will be improving, placing parking and a park bench and improvements within the city right-of-way. The project is substantially consistent with the previous plan that council approved, with the exception of moving the buildings. They are again providing the easements along US 1 and an eight-foot sidewalk so that we can have a 10-foot easement and a continuation for the linear park that would come south through this way. And one thing that is unusual with this, our city code does, requires approval for a building height request of over 100%, does require a 5/7 vote of City Council this evening. Additionally, your City Council Policy Number 21, which was established in 2006, does not allow staff to make a recommendation on a building height request over 100%. There wasn't an intention that council wouldn't consider those requests, simply that they wanted to hear them at that time on a case-by-case basis without a recommendation from city staff. However, the Planning and Zoning Board has made a recommendation, and they have voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. And with that, staff would recommend approval ordinance number 2017-64, along with site plan 2011 O3SC, based upon the findings and conditions contained within the Planning and Zoning Board memorandum.
Thank you, Ms. Dimmer. Any questions for Ms. Dimmer?
I have one, ma'am.
Ms. Lopez.
Would this be the largest buildings in the city?
No, not, not, you mean by height?
Height.
No, ma'am. For example, the Trinity Towers buildings, one of them is 175 feet tall, and one's 145 feet tall. And I forgot, there is a rendering here that I meant to show you as well.
Okay.
So that's what they're proposed to look like.
The 1901 building?
It's about 120 feet.
Yeah, and then there's a condominium right behind the Melbourne Seafood Station, I think that's about.
It's in about 90. It's under 100.
So it's close, yeah.
Mayor.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Thomas.
Is this, what, nine stories, 10 stories? What's this? It is eight floors, I believe.
Okay.
Buildings, Florida's ceiling height has grown, so you typically see at least 11 to 12 feet.
Yeah. Mayor? Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Moore.
I'd be delighted to see that property developed. It's been vacant for a long time, and as far as these rendings are concerned, it looks great to me, and I'm glad to see the sidewalk and the easement and, and all the extra amenities that they're putting in with it.
Yes, anyone else?
Mayor, yeah.
I'm sorry, Ms. Lopez.
I happen to agree with Councilmember Moore. It's a beautiful, those buildings are beautiful, and that would be a great addition to the city. I think, I would back this up.
Yeah, definitely.
And there, if I could just correct, it's a 10-story building that was in our staff report, but I forgot.
Okay.
10 floors.
10 floors, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I do have a sign-up sheet by Mr. Clayton Bennett. Yes, all right, so he's here for any questions. Any questions for Mr. Bennett?
Mayor.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Thomas.
I'm just curious, from the time, how long do you think these will be ready?
I know the developer wants to go yesterday, so I mean, he's really pushing ahead, so I think he's already started on some architectural plans, so.
And would both buildings be going up at the same time, or would they be one first and then the other?
Typically, for staging, you would do one, one building first, get it up out of the ground before you would start the second.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Bennett? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Okay, council, uh, let me, that's the only sign-up sheet, let me get back up here. All right, so disclosures are required, any disclosures? Seeing none, and then I had a sign-up sheet under public hearing, so I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council, what is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Ms. Minas.
I move for approval of ordinance number 2017-64 with SP 2011 O3SC, based upon the findings and conditions contained in the Planning and Zoning Board memorandum.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for approval of ordinance number 2017-64 with SP 2011-03SC by Ms. Minas, second by Mr. Thomas. Discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, and I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item 25 is resolution number 3689, Ms., under Community Development, Ms. Cindy Dimmer.
Yes, Mr. Todd Corwin is going to present this item for council this evening.
Okay, very good. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a few slides on this particular presentation. These are the evaluation and appraisal review amendments. There are large-scale amendments to the comprehensive plan, which means they are amendments to the text and the maps of the elements within the comprehensive plan, as well as the future land use map. This evaluation is required every seven years. It used to be a much more involved process when the State Land Use Planning Agency was the Department of Community Affairs. There's now much more flexibility that local governments have. In looking at the comprehensive plan every seven years, local governments have to address statutory requirement changes. There is one included in this package, as well as legislative requirements, such as ones that are required by statutes over the years. This particular amendment package will go through the state coordinated review, it's a different process than other large scales have to go through. It's, again, it's been streamlined over the years, it used to be a much more involved process. But when staff looked at the comprehensive plan and looked at statutory changes since 2010, when the last one was finished, there was one required amendment due to the changes, and that was to the coastal management element. There are changes to state statutes that require local governments to address potential coastal flooding aspects, it's called the peril of flood amendments. These amendments look at coastal flooding in those areas where it may be repetitive and may be associated with storm events and potential sea level rise. There is also one amendment that, or a policy change that addresses the coastal hazard area definition, that has changed as well, and there are updates to the coastal management maps. I should also note that in order to delete the coastal hazard area definition, we had to amend the introduction section as well. The change that has all the data analysis associated with this, with it, is a statutory requirement. Local governments are required to keep a planning, a short-term planning horizon of five years, and then a longer range, planning horizon of 10 years in the comprehensive plan. Our planning horizon currently only goes out to 2025, so staff had to project that out to 2040. out to 2040. All the data analysis does that. It shows that the future land use element has sufficient space to accommodate the future population needs of the city. It also, this data analysis also included population projections out to 2040. You'll see some date changes and some unit changes in the future land use and housing elements, as well as a date change on the future land use map to show that these are the future, long-range planning horizon has been pushed out to 2040. It also includes updates to all the maps within the future land use element, as you might expect to reach that 2040 threshold. Again, those, these are large-scale amendments. It's a little different process than the small-scale amendments, such as the annexation comprehensive plan amendments you just reviewed. These actually will go to the state for review. The Department of Economic Opportunity and other state agencies will have the opportunity to review these. They will be then sent back to the city for Staff to comment, and then they will come back to you sometime after the first of the year in ordinance form for adoption. And I'm available for any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? We have to thank the Governor for shortening the process, because that was one of his pet projects, so, so you're telling me it was much easier?
It was, yes. It was streamlined quite a bit.
Good. All right, no further questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Do I have any sign-up sheets? No, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to Council. What is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Thomas.
Recommend approval of Resolution 3689, based upon the findings contained in the Planning and Zoning Board memorandum.
Second.
I have a motion for approval of Resolution Number 3689 by Mr. Thomas, second by Mr. Alfred. Discussion, seeing none. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and I vote aye, and the motion passes. Without objection, Council will convene as the Melbourne Downtown Community Redevelopment Agency for the following item. Item Number 26 is a council action item, the Melbourne Downtown CRA Main Street Annual Agreement. Ms. Cindy Dimmer.
Yes, this is a request to approve physical year 2017-2018 grant funding agreement between the Melbourne Downtown CRA and the Melbourne Main Street, in the amount of $87,500. This agreement will be for the period between October 1 of 2017 through September 30 of 2018. On an annual basis, the Melbourne Main Street presents the Downtown CRA Advisory Committee with an annual report demonstrating its fulfillment of our contractual obligations of these funding agreements, as well as its consistency with the goals of the Downtown CRA redevelopment plan. That is, was contained in your package this evening for Council's review as well. The grant agreement goes through a lot of the different partnerships and examples that the Melvyn Main Street has with the CRA and with the CRA staff that happen on a daily basis. Some of those programs include, I just want to highlight for them, programs such as the mural program. It's been initiated by the Melvyn Main Street program that has really grown tremendously in the last year or so. Additionally, Melvyn Main Street assists with our review of the facade improvement programs, as well as the commercial lighting program. They assist in the review and recommendations to the advisory committee with that process. Additionally, Melbourne Main Street oversees the business wayfinding program, the signage program that's been downtown for quite a few years. They handle all of the management oversight of the wayfinding program. They're also involved in parking management issues downtown, or in the process right now. Melbourne Main Street is helping to set up a steering committee to gain input from the downtown merchants and property owners about what some of our parking management problems are in downtown. And additionally, Melbourne Main Street assists on a day-to-day basis with our community policing program, including the housing of our officer there in their office locations that is now on Vernon Place. So, with that, the Melbourne Downtown CRA Advisory Committee did recommend continuation of the funding and approval of the 2017-2018 grant agreement. Funding is available currently within the downtown CRA budget, and Staff would recommend approval of the 2017-2018 grant funding agreement between the Melbourne Downtown CRA and Melbourne Main Street, Inc.
All right, thank you, Ms. Dimmer. Any questions for Ms. Dimmer? All right, seeing none. Council, what is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Ms. Minas.
I move for approval of 2017-2018 grant funding agreement between the Melbourne Downtown CRA and Melbourne Main Street, Inc.
Second. I have a motion for approval of Item Number 26, as stated in Council's package, by Ms. Minas, second by Ms. Moore. Discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Thomas.
Yes, ma'am, this is, this is one of the things that really concerns me with the CRA. Again, with, with all of the CRA attention that's been in the news lately, and again, people assuming that they're doing the right thing, and then we've had one city that's gotten in trouble because of their CRA. You know, I look at the, the letters from the County Commission on Melbourne CRA, I look at the City Manager's response back, and there's, there's a disconnect between the two entities as far as the interpretation of what blight is and interpreting the state statute on the CRA. In particular, with whether or not you can use CRA funds for special events and festivals. And so, I'm really, really concerned about it. You know, you know, so if somebody's right or somebody's wrong, so what, who, who is the deciding entity on whether or not what people are doing is correct? Because you've got two conflicting opinions here, one from the city attorney and then one from the county attorney, and they're, they're at complete odds from each other. So, I'm concerned with that and would like to find a resolution to how we resolve that.
Mayor, Ms. Moore.
There is much discussion on the CRAs, but I feel I have to go along with the interpretation that is given by the Melbourne City Attorney, Allison Dowley.
Yeah.
Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Alfred.
I kind of agree with Councilmember Thomas, we maybe get some resolution on this, but my issue is, in District 5, I don't feel District 5 gets the attention that most districts get. I go down to many streets, Mathers, et cetera, and then just the roads are just horrible. I mean, they're falling apart, and I can't support giving out money to have festivals downtown when my district is just, it's, it's not getting the attention the CRAs are getting. I don't think it's fair. And whether you want to say interpretation, city, county, whatever, it comes down to our basic core function is roads and sewer, et cetera. So, I've got to, I'm going to say no to this.
Mr. Alfred, we have a budget for road improvements in the city of Melbourne.
Oh, I'm aware.
So, it's a matter of priority. It's over a million dollars.
Yeah, well, when you're driving to District 5, you're going to say, well, apparently it's not enough.
All right, so, Mr. McNeese.
Yeah, I think there's probably an easy solution to this. We can debate and maybe will continue to debate whether all of the specific expenditures from the CRA in past years, which is what we're talking about right now, have been pursuant to what state law says. Now, we will argue, and your city attorney has argued, I think, very clearly, with pretty solid documentation, that all the expenditures to date have been legal. And so, I think this Council has followed that advice, Staff has certainly followed that advice, which brings us to today. And I would correct one thing, we actually haven't heard from the County Commission on this subject. We have received some letters from a single commissioner acting on his own, and the County Commission as a body declined to get into the issue. So, I think that's an important thing to clarify. But you have an option moving forward from a matter of policy where you don't need anybody's opinion but your own, as Council members. And if you want to say prospectively that this issue of parades and festivals is something that you don't think you should fund with CRA money, then you can make that a provision of this agreement with Melbourne Main Street and say, you know, Cindy has done a good job of outlining all the hard nuts and bolts, infrastructure-type work that Melbourne Main Street does for us, that this agreement is about. If you want to specify that your money from the CRA can't go in Melbourne Main Street or in the O'Gally Arts District, when we get to that one, for parades and festivals, you can say that as a matter of policy. You don't need a legal opinion for that. And that issue's off the table, and we can go forward. If you want to make that a condition of this agreement going forward, we can write that in, and we won't do that anymore.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
And I'll second that motion.
What, okay.
What is the motion?
I have one on the floor.
The motion would be to strike special events.
Hello? Ms.?
Yes.
I have a motion on the floor.
I'm sorry.
We have a motion on the floor. Thank you, Ms. Weiser. It was Ms. Minas and Ms. Moore. So, we have a motion for approval of Item 26.
Correct.
All right, so Council, what is your pleasure? I'm going to go for a vote. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
All right, so, I vote aye, so we need a roll call. Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Minas?
Aye.
Councilmember Alfred?
Nay.
Councilmember Lopez?
Nay.
Councilmember Tim Thomas?
Nay. Nay. Nay.
I have you as a nay.
Too much water.
Vice Mayor Debbie Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Meehan? I vote aye, and the motion passes. All right, so, all right, we will go on. Item, without objection, Council will reconvene for the reminding items.
Mayor.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Alfred.
And then, actually, that motion passed, it's fine. I'll make a motion that we do strike that provision of parades and such to the CRA funding.
Second.
All right, I have a motion to, what is your motion, to strike?
Strike parades and festivals.
Events, festivals.
There's, there's not a portion of the agreement that states there's any money being spent for festivals or parade. It would, it would be an addition of and exclusion of any expenditure of money towards festivals.
Okay, so, Mr. Alfred, you going to revise your?
Yes, I'll revise it to that, that is correct.
Second.
So, I'm sorry, I just need to, I just need to understand something. The agreement passed as written, so you go with that. Are you asking that there be a, more of the policy issue that Mr. McNeese had mentioned, that in future agreements, that the funding not be used for the festivals and parades as a policy matter going forward? Now, it might not affect this agreement, because the motions already passed.
Right, well, and I want to add what the city manager said. I mean, I agree, there is really no, in my opinion, malfeasance to, you know, the spending. What I'm looking at it now is just tightening our belt and saying, look, if we're going to spend this money, it's going to be in a fashion that's, that's, that's no, not so controversial. So, I'm trying to find a solution for this that we can move forward. So, that, that is correct. That's what my motion would be.
Be more of a policy?
Policy.
I don't, I guess I don't understand.
I'm a little confused.
Me too. All right, so, Mr. McNeese.
This particular agreement already doesn't envision this money being used for parades or festivals. It's all for other things. So, if you want to adopt a policy going forward, that as we get into these in the future, O'Gally Arts District will eventually have to come back to you, this one will come back to you in another year, that we make sure that we don't spend either through these agreements or directly, as the city, your CRA funds on parades or festivals. You can, you can state that as a matter of policy, and then we'll take that into account as we go forward.
Okay, do we, do we need to vote on that, then?
I think if you make a motion and vote on that as a matter of policy, then we'll, that will guide us as we go forward, sure.
Okay.
Mayor? All right, so I have a motion and a second, and then discussion.
Discussion. All right, let me, I'm, just so that I'm, that I'm clear on this, Friday night, Main Street in O'Gally is having their, lighting of their Christmas tree.
That's a festival.
And that's a festival. So, and, and that is being offset by the Main Street and EGAD budget.
I'm not sure which breaks up where.
But are you saying that you do not want these type of things? Santa is coming, the carers are coming.
I know.
They're going to light the Christmas tree, that's a festival.
Well.
Where do we drive?
Another thing, too, is that they also get sponsors for these festivals. So, now the whole thing is like dead, because, I mean, it's not just money from the CRA and Main Street, we got sponsors that come in.
Yeah, so I need a clarification on this.
Now, Mr. Dow.
I don't know the exact numbers, because I didn't expect to have this conversation tonight, but in some material that I had done before, not all of the budget of Main Street is funded by the CRA, just a very small percentage, frankly. And the same with EGAD, even though they have a larger percentage that's funded by the CRA, they have other sources of funding as well, and I don't know if Cindy would know that information offhand, but simply because you say CRA money's not going to be used for a festival, doesn't mean they can't allocate their other resources for that purpose. I don't know.
Wait a minute, Mr. Alfred. All right, Vice Mayor Thomas.
So, I'm confused. I know that we have Ms. Eisenberg here right now. I'm, I would like to hear from her, if she's willing, how that would affect and what it would affect at this point, or if she sees it affecting going forward.
I mean, well, is, are you ready to answer that? I mean, okay, so, Ms. Eisenberg, she's the Executive Director of Melbourne Main Street.
As far as Melbourne Main Street is concerned and our budget, and we can provide more information as requested by Council, I believe I'm correct in stating that the CRA grant represents about 10% of our budget overall, because we've done a really good job of pulling in funding from other sources, such as grants that we receive from the Office of Tourism, the Bovard Cultural Alliance, as well as sponsorships. I could also say, and I've been going through this with our treasurer, Don De Frisco, owner of Pal and Blazes, but our events are self-sustaining. So, out of that grant, we take $15,000. That goes to pay for all the decorations that you see downtown, everything on the light poles, to the Christmas tree. The other is used for the initiatives that Ms. Cindy Dimmer explained. All of our events I fundraise and sponsorships for, I'll give you an example, for the Food and Wine Festival, I raised over $35,000 in sponsorships and sold 1,500 tickets to make that event happen. Other events like Friday Fest and Botanical Festival, I'm selling vendor spaces as well as sponsorships to make those events happen. Having said all that, I know there are different feelings about events. They are crucial for the economic development of downtown. I can tell you that the small businesses depend on those events and the traffic to come downtown. When those events were canceled in October, they were really, really hurting because of that. I can also tell you that they are wonderful tradition makers and memory makers. They foster resident attachment. They also attract developers, like Mr. Sam Zimmerman, who's building the High Line. So, it's a complete package that you need to make a vibrant downtown. But we've done a really good job of growing our budget and finding other sources and making sure that our events completely stand on their own.
All right.
So, if I can ask, then, when it comes to just even say last weekend, your tree lighting, this would not be affected if?
So, if we didn't receive the grant with, to pay for the tree lights, you would not have any decorations downtown, unless we can go to the downtown businesses and ask them for that amount of money. But $15,000 would be a lot of money to raise for that. So, I don't know that we could say that you would have Christmas lights or a Christmas tree. Everything else that you saw downtown that night, Santa, horse and carriage rides, those are all paid for by the businesses downtown that we fundraised with.
Any other questions? All right.
And Mayor, if I could clarify, too, and on page 667 of Council's package, that actually is the last page of the funding agreement, there's actually a breakdown of where the $87,500 is intended to be expended. And as you can see, there, there's no line item in there that talks about the money for this being expended on festivals. I will say, in years previous to last year, the 2016 agreements and going backwards, there were specific line items that did talk about assistance with Friday Fest and things like that. That hasn't been in the agreement last year, nor proposed in this year. So, there, there is no acknowledgement that any of this money is to be used for festivals. This is to be used in carrying out the requirements within the agreement, as well as the CRA goals that we've talked about earlier.
Okay, Ms. Eisenberg.
But also, like, we, we, when it comes to events, we pay for all the cities and services, all the cops that work details, everyone that's putting out a barricade, we're, we're paying, we're contributing to the city, we're impacting that economic development with all those events as well.
I will tell you, we'll, if, we're going to go backwards, because I've seen the downtown where it was really bad. So, we are doing a good job, year after year, doing, and thanks to Jaren, you're doing an excellent job to promote downtown, and we've got downtown O'Gally that needs help. So, I think we're going backwards. That's my opinion.
Mayor.
Mr. Alfred.
I mean, what we're saying here, we're not trying to say, hey, let's, let's kill all this. What we're saying is, is adopting a policy that says, look, we're not going to pay for festivals and such, and we, the money goes to CRAs, you go just spend it to, spend it in other, under other directions. I will tell you, from sitting up here, hearing from both sides, that I'm trying to come to a resolution. I will tell you from sitting up here, hearing from both sides, that I'm trying to come to a resolution with attorney letters coming back and forth from the city claiming that, hey, you can't misuse the money. And like I said, I don't think there's any malfeasance whatsoever, and I think you've done a wonderful job. I've been in Melbourne almost 50 years, so I know what downtown Melbourne used to look like. And again, you're doing a great job. I'm asking you to adopt a policy, something that Ms. Dittmer says we're already not doing. So that's a perfect out for a city manager saying, look, our council adopted a policy, we don't do festivals, parades. Have a nice day. We will continue and build downtown Melbourne and O'Gally. But at the end of the day, I cannot say, let's do festivals and parades when I have issues in District 5. Again, I'm a businessman, and I agree with what you're doing downtown and trying to help the local businesses. So I'm just asking for a little latitude here, that's it.
Okay, any other comments? All right, so let's take a vote. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Let me be sure that we're voting.
Count, not doing parades and?
Festivals.
In the finances.
In the CRAs.
Not.
No, no, no.
No, that's not.
The policy is that the CRA grant to the Main Street in the future would not be, the money would not be used to fund festivals or parades. There's no question about giving the grant.
Yeah, not at all. And Ms. Eisenberg will make sure it go to something else, correct?
No.
So, I have a question then, I'm sorry, I'm very confused, I'm very confused. So this doesn't sound like it would affect downtown here, this Melbourne downtown, but it could possibly affect the O'Gally downtown area. So as of now, that's the way I'm understanding it. And I can understand and get the parade side of it. I don't get or understand the festival side of it. I think at this point, we've shown here that the money isn't going towards that. I don't know where the problem comes in, if we've already shown the money isn't coming towards that. So maybe we're making things harder on ourselves than what we actually need to be doing when it's already not happening.
Yeah.
You know, I have a really hard time with that, not to mention, I mean legally, I mean, I have listened to what our city attorney has stated on this, and I believe that she's correct in the case, but barring, you know, it's taken to court and a judge decides which way is the exact same right way, I don't wanna sit here and start changing things until we know that, you know? It doesn't seem like we need to be changing anything at this point, especially since it doesn't seem to be working that way. So it just feels like we're making a rule that doesn't need to be at this point.
I agree with you.
Right, I agree too.
Mayor? Yeah, Ms. Minus?
I also, if we're gonna vote on something, then I can't, you know, I'm still confused about it. I'm hearing, and I believe I understand, but unless I see something in writing and I can dissect it myself, then I can interpret it and make, you know, a better decision. You know, I'm not prepared to do anything with this tonight.
And Mayor, I would also like to say that I would agree with that. I think that it would be, I mean, it was very nice that we had Ms. Eisenberg here tonight to answer some of the questions. You know, she may not have been here. That being said, I think we owe it to O'Gally to be able to be here and answer those same kind of questions. So I don't know if you'd be worth it or not, but maybe this is something that can come up on another agenda item, and then we can have further discussion with a little bit more knowledge built in.
I agree.
Madam Mayor, the answer like food truck night, April in Paris, Drag Queen Bingo, which CRAs do those fall under?
That's the O'Gally.
That's the O'Gally, that's the O'Gally CRA?
Yes.
Well, that's, those in particular are the ones that are being paid for with CRA funds?
No.
That we need to take a look at.
No, they're not. Yeah. Mr. McNeese?
We'll certainly wanna clarify some of that because some of those are probably just private business activities that take place at a different, you know, at a bar, at a restaurant in O'Gally. Those aren't all necessarily even, the CRA doesn't have any activities. O'Gally Arts District, which is the O'Gally Main Street program, does have some activities. I think most of the ones you just referred to are probably just private business activities, but we have to clarify exactly what we're talking about there.
So are those 501(c)(3) that we give CRA money to?
No, they are Florida Main Street programs. I don't know what their tax status is, but they are creatures of something called the Florida Main Street program.
So they receive no funding at all, no CRA money at all through any type of 501?
No, not, there's no 501(c)(3) in play here. And when you say they, the activities that you just referred to, the Drag Queen Bingo, the food truck Thursdays, some of those may be O'Gally Arts District events, but I don't think all of those are. Some of those are just, think promotions that private businesses have, that we have nothing to do with. We don't put money in, the O'Gally Arts District doesn't put money in, they're just events that they have at their business. So that, I don't really wanna get into that because I don't really know exactly all of the nuances of that. But the Main Street programs are not-for-profit organizations. I don't know whether there's technically 501(c)(3)'s under tax law, Jaren says they are, I suspect they were. So they do have not-for-profit status, those two organizations. Those are the agencies to which you give grants, one from the downtown CRA, one from the O'Gally CRA that we're talking about. And the O'Gally agreement isn't here tonight, so we don't have the details of that. I don't think we've adopted it yet this year.
It is coming on the next agenda.
But we can have that conversation the next time.
December 14th, we'll be O'Gally.
Right, and Mayor, then what I'll do is, so it's not so confusing, I'll go ahead and pull the motion, and I'll get with the city manager and discuss that, see if we can't make something work, and maybe in coordination where we can kind of resolve this whole county-city issue in the process to help our city staff with their responses, et cetera. So I'll go ahead and pull the motion this time.
Okay, you're gonna pull the motion, is that agreeable with Mr. Thomas? Okay. Mayor? As long as, okay, so you're gonna go into discussion, and so if you wanna bring back on council's agenda, you're gonna bring it back?
Yes, ma'am.
Whatever, okay.
Yeah, ma'am.
As an agenda item?
As an agenda item, to be discussed.
Okay. That way we can get all the information.
Yeah, Ms. Lopez?
I can agree on what Councilmember Paul Alfie is saying right now because I don't think we have answers to everything. So I think we should table this until we have all the information so we can make the right decision. Because to say one CRA can't do something and then the other one, you know, we gotta be fair to both of them.
I agree, and you know what, we got the Babcock Street CRA.
That's.
So I don't think they're doing festivals on Babcock Street because first we gotta fix the road, okay?
But they're giving us a lot of money towards Babcock Street.
Yeah, that's right, thank you for that, your CRA. Okay, all right, so let's do that, that's good.
Are we going to set a date when staff is going to bring this information back to us?
All right, so, Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I would just like to say too, you know, when the funding was pulled for the parades, you know, everybody panicked and said, oh, the sky's falling, and we're never gonna have a parade, and, you know, we're having businesses now that are coming forward to fund these parades. And so, you know, if CRA is going to these festivals, and we'll find out for sure on parades or whatever the case may be, if that funding is pulled, it will still happen if those downtown and those in the surrounding communities still wanna have those activities take place. It's gonna happen, just like Mayor Lynch stepped up to help us with the Christmas parade. And they're not even a downtown business, they're even in the county. So again, people are going to step up, they're going to make sure that we have these activities, but we don't need to use taxpayer funds to do it, we don't need to do it. So we definitely need to look into it and make sure that we're not doing that for any of the events that we're doing in any of the CRAs.
Mayor?
Yeah, Ms. Moore? We also have to go by Main Street rules. Main Street has a guideline also.
So, are we gonna bring this back, well, it would have to be first of the year.
As Ms. Dittmer said, the O'Gally Arts District agreement that parallels this downtown agreement comes to you on your next agenda. We'll be prepared to answer the questions that have come up at that time.
December 14th?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor?
12th.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
And it may, I mean, and the reason why I wanted this to be tabled at least for a little while, it may come back, we may end up finding out that O'Gally is, says, you know what, this isn't really going to affect us and we're not using it this way. And they might come back and say it's totally fine, and, you know, and if that's the case and that's the way city council wants to go, then that's great, you know? But without knowing exactly what this affects, how it affects, and, you know, hearing from everybody that are players within both, you know, downtown here and downtown O'Gally, I think that's only the fair thing to do.
I do too.
Okay.
I agree.
All right, but see, I guess my concern is we're gonna bring back O'Gally CRA, and I think we should delay O'Gally CRA until first of the year when we have information on both of them, before we make a final decision. Because now, okay, so we'll bring back the O'Gally CRA and then make the decision, but then we have Melbourne CRA to discuss in the future. Or are we gonna bring both back December 14th?
Well, you've already approved the Melbourne agreement this evening.
That's true, but we wanna do, okay, all right. I was thinking about the information we'll have and to make a policy.
What we're gonna be doing is approving O'Gally's agreement just as we approved downtown Melbourne's CRA agreement.
And Ms. Eisenberg reiterated that they're not utilizing any of the CRA grant funding towards any festival expenses. And so I think that's clear for downtown Melbourne, I think the question is whether O'Gally is doing that. It is not specified in their agreement that that's what the funds are for, but I do not offhand have their accounting in front of me to tell you that they're not using any either, I'm not sure.
Okay, all right, thank you. Without objection, council, we'll reconvene for the remaining items. Item number 27, ordinance number 2017-65, Babcock Street CRA Redevelopment Plan Amendment. Ms. Cindy Dittmer?
Ordinance number 2017-65. An ordinance of the City of Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida relating to the Babcock Street Redevelopment Plan, making findings amending Chapter 20 of the City Code entitled Community Planning and Development. Amending Section 20-170, duration of agency, amending Section 20-172, Community Redevelopment Plan approved. Providing for redevelopment plan modification to include new programs and extending the duration of the agency by one year, providing for severability and interpretation, providing an effective date, and providing an adoption schedule.
Thank you, Ms. Dolly, this is under Community Development, Ms. Cindy Dittmer.
Yes, this is the first reading of an ordinance revising City Code to amend the Babcock Street CRA redevelopment plan. The amendment establishes new capital project priorities through the remaining life of the Babcock CRA, which will include the reconstruction of the Babcock Street corridor. The redevelopment plan amendment also provides one additional year to the duration of the CRA, creating a new sunset date of September 9th of 2023. Just of note, the county commission will still have to amend their resolution with our delegation of authority to give that one-year extension. So that's an action that will still need to occur on the county's behalf. All of the projects that are outlined within this plan amendment are mobility-related projects. The project which we've called Babcock Street Streetscaping Phase 3B, which is from Brevard Drive to the railroad tracks, that's been an ongoing project, and we're hoping for that project to begin in 2018. The Babcock Street Reconstruction Project is the second project listed there. The additional projects that are listed out a little bit later in the years are a right-hand turn lane on Airport Boulevard at NASA, Apollo Boulevard area sidewalk projects, and a bus turnout and bus shelter along NASA Boulevard where we have the large transfer of the SCAT routes in that area. So those are the proposed mobility projects. As Mr. McNeese mentioned earlier, the county commission did approve the agreement that will utilize the Babcock Street CRA as a funding mechanism for the reconstruction of the Babcock Street between Hibiscus and Apollo Boulevard. And the Babcock CRA Advisory Committee and the Planning and Zoning Board have both recommended approval of this plan amendment, and staff recommend approval ordinance number 2017-65.
Thank you, Ms. Dittmer, any questions for Ms. Dittmer?
Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Thomas?
I would just like to point out on our agenda report, it does say District 3 on there, and it is District 4. So I just wanna make sure that everybody is aware that that is council District 4 in there. That would be it.
Okay, so I have a question on the shelter. Are we talking about the one that's on the Sears property?
We haven't identified specifically the site location. We have discussed with the airport a year or so ago of actually the possibility of the bus turnout is actually like a lane for the bus to get out of the roadway and to locate a shelter on the property that's west of the Sears property that's managed by the airport. So we've had some initial discussions, there's been nothing concrete by any means, but that would make a, probably a better location to construct a turnout lane in the shelter on that property.
Because that is really busy on that particular shelter.
Yes, it is.
Two seats, there's no shelter, and I see it all the time, so. And I know Sears is looking at redeveloping some of their property, but.
Yes, and so there could still be the possibility, working with them, that it could work out on the Sears property if not, the other thought is the airport property.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, this is, let me see, public hearing, do I have any sign-up sheets? I will close the public hearing, bring it back to council, what is your pleasure?
Mayor?
I think I heard Vice Mayor Thomas, I think there was a close call there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Move for approval of ordinance number 2017-65.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for approval of ordinance number 2017-65 by Vice Mayor Thomas, second by Ms. Minus. Discussion, seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item number 28 is council discussion on Honor America. This was requested by Councilmember Alfrey, you're on.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Real quick, tonight, I put this, the first part of, I put the first part of Honor America on the agenda tonight as there are several issues I think that need to be resolved. I'm not gonna go into the particulars of the pending criminal investigation of the Honor America's roof contract. As you know, the Liberty Bell Museum and Military Memorial Park's building and property are city-owned assets, and they're owned by our taxpayers. We as elected officials have a duty to bring information to the board that may be detrimental to our taxpayers and their assets. As the board is aware, Honor America has a lease with the city for a dollar a year for the Liberty Bell Museum and the Military Memorial Park. That current lease requires Honor America to maintain the building's maintenance. Although prior council chose to partially fund this building's maintenance through a grant of $6,200 a year, this funding was pulled several months ago as it would create a conflict of interest between Councilmember Moore, as she is on the board here and the president of Honor America. I personally believe this has always created a personal conflict of interest, and it puts our staff at a disadvantage. And as I previously asked Councilmember Moore to step down as president of Honor America, she of course refused. Now, where am I going with this? New information has risen that under Councilmember Moore's leadership at Honor America, on August 14th, 2017, Honor America was suspended from operations by the state of Florida for failing to file its financial disclosures. Furthermore, the follow-up by the state enforcement officials, Honor America has canceled its registration. It is no longer able to seek donations as of October 3rd. More troubling now that Honor America is closed, a handwritten sign on the door states, "Closed for repairs." Although staff previously complained that they owed thousands of dollars in back pay and will no longer staff the museum. I guess one of the biggest current concerns for me is that it is city property, it's taxpayer property, and there's current damage to the soffit system at the Liberty Bell Museum, which can make way for animals to get in the attic system. And if you could pull up the pictures, I'd appreciate it. As a Florida-certified home inspector, I've seen animals eat into electrical wire and do other damage, because actually that's what they do unfortunately. Since Councilmember Moore is Honor America president, and I need to operate in the sunshine, I would like answers on record as to what her plans are with Honor America, if she's gonna continue to operate it, or what's she gonna do in protecting a city asset that she has control over.
All right, Ms. Moore?
The soffit and the facial will be taken care of within the next two weeks. It will be replaced. And the museum, we have legal counsel, Kendall Moore is our attorney of record, and we will be reopening the museum. Unfortunately, I'm getting all the blame for what has happened there, but it fell under the direction of a previous. but it fell under the direction of a previous president of the board. And, but as I say, I've got broad shoulders, so I'm taking the brunt of everything. But the museum will be back open and will be functioning. And we can accept donations as long as we state the fact that they are not tax deductible.
Okay, well, then, actually going in, then like I said, I am not going to get into the criminal aspect. Hopefully that investigation will be done here in the next couple of weeks and we can go there. But I will say, being in law enforcement for many years, you get to a point to investigation where you need to have affidavits signed and you need to continue on in that manner. So I'm actually going to make a motion tonight that we authorize.
I need to address that last statement by Councilman Alfred.
All right, Ms. Moore.
You being in law enforcement in the past, Mr. Alfred, you should realize how long it takes to put a case together. And that is exactly what is happening. Many subpoenas were put out and much information was gotten back, but some of it was incomplete.
I have to say, I don't think the current, an open investigation really is a proper subject for us at this table. I think it.
Well, it was addressed to me, city manager. And, you know, I sit here with as much right to say back as being put that I am the blame for everything. And unfortunately, I am not. So that is the reason that I chose to answer Councilman Alfred.
I will say, Mayor, I'm not putting the blame on you. You're the president of Honor America, so therefore we have to be in the sunshine. I can't come to you, I even told you that months ago when I asked you to step down and you refused. I mean, that's fine. If you want, I believe it's an ethical issue and we'll go, we'll address that down the road. But I'm not blaming you and I have been in law enforcement for 20 years. I'm not complaining about the length of investigation. A good length of investigation determines they're probably doing their job. That's not the problem. But I will tell you, when you get into a point that there's affidavits and such that have to be signed to continue. And where I'm going back to my motion before I was interrupted, I'd like to authorize a city manager and city attorney to act as our representatives and work to get all the money back that we were defrauded of from our, for our taxpayers and report back to the council with all findings, including the criminal and administrative prosecution of all those who defrauded the city in this Honor America inflated, overinflated roof construction contract scam. So I would like to make that motion and make sure that the, our city attorney or city manager understands that we say no to defraing the city.
Second.
So that's my motion.
All right, so I don't even feel comfortable discussing this issue without the report from, the final report from the police department.
We're not discussing this issue.
And we're not even there yet.
We're not discussing the issue. What I'm saying is we're going to take an aggressive approach to recover money that is out there, that belongs to the taxpayers, that was taken out of our reserves.
Mayor, I must address that. On the advice of Kendall Moore, we cannot, as a city, proceed with anything until the criminal investigation is completed and filed with the state's attorney's office and with their action.
Okay, Mr. McNeese.
To the motion, it's perfectly fine. All of the things I think that were embodied in that motion already exist without that motion. Ms. Dolly and I are already your representatives in this matter. And the things that Councilman Alfred is suggesting need to happen are exactly what will happen. The order of the dominoes falling, that criminal investigation has to close first. And we are not getting involved in chasing any money or trying to collect money or recover money until that's closed and that day is near and that's handed over to the state attorney and the legal process has to take place first so that its integrity is protected. But all those things that Councilman Alfred is suggesting need to happen are, you already have hired us to do those things. And with or without a motion here at the table, that's what will happen next.
Well, and I would like for it to be on record because I, and again, there's certain things I can and cannot say, but I, all of us, this whole council, was advised other stuff a while back and it's not true. And I won't go into it, but I'm sure when it's brought up, I'm sure the council is not going to be pleased that they made decisions on false information and was given incorrect information about what is going on. So I just want it on record because I've seen the evidence and through my experience, I know we have issues and I would just like to make sure that they're addressed and resolved. So, but thank you, Mr. McNeese.
Mayor, I have a question. Are we saying that Honor America is no longer a not-for-profit organization at this time?
At this time.
Okay, does that violate our lease agreement with the city? Because giving that type of lease agreement for a dollar, we relied on the fact that Honor America was a not-for-profit organization. And I don't think we leased any of our buildings to any organizations for that price, a dollar, unless they were a not-for-profit organization.
Working from memory here, the original lease is from years and years ago. And in fact, in the original lease, it doesn't even identify Honor America whether it's a not-for-profit or for-profit organization. So I have never looked at the minutes to see if it was discussed that the reason we're doing this is because it's a not-for-profit. That said, there was an amendment a number of years later where they actually identified it on a more formal basis as a not-for-profit. But in, I am not aware of any reason to think that that was the contingency. And if it was, there was nothing written in the lease that would suggest that we could break the lease because of it. But again, they're older leases and, you know, lessons have been learned. And today, we write our leases a little bit differently. And that's the kind of issue that we tend to address today that we might not have addressed back in the 80s.
Well, what is the policy of the city, though?
There is no policy.
There isn't? Well, maybe we should start looking at that. Because also the fact that these leases should state that once they lose their not-for-profit status, that that lease should be terminated.
A condition of default. We can do that going forward. There has not been something like that today.
Well, and Mayor, I will say, back in even 2000, I believe it's 2015, even Councilmember Nalan had mentioned this and he asked a specific question and Mr. McNeese's answer to him is, "We don't have controls over these leases and we'll put them all together." I think with this issue, and we can say, hey, it's going to get fixed and all, but, you know, we need to really look at this and make sure that we do tighten it up and say, hey, if you're not going to properly maintain the building, if you're going to lose your 501(c)(3) status. I mean, it doesn't look good at the City of Melbourne when you go down there and then there's stuff laying around and there's a sign on the door that says, you know, "We're closed" and "For repairs." I mean, it doesn't reflect on, you know, the City of Melbourne very well or us because people associate that with the City of Melbourne. I mean, and I'm a military veteran and think and look at it that that's what it's being ran as. And I'm not here to place blame, but I can tell you, I was a president of a 501(c)(3) and when you take that president role, you, you're the CEO and you place all the blame you want. But you have to, you have to fix things. And at the end of the day, all this happened on your watch, Ms. Moore. So, you know, you have to take some responsibilities. I mean, at any time, you could file your paperwork.
It is being handled, Councilman Alfred, on the advice of our attorney. That is exactly what he said when I knew you were going to bring up something this evening, that this is being handled. When we have a group that wants a tour through, we still open the building and we make sure that someone is there, a docent, and takes the tour group through. Our status will be back, working according to our attorney, and that's all I'm going to say about it.
Okay, any further discussion? I don't think I could support this. Are you, were you still on the motion in the second?
Yes, and I was on the motion and Mayor, I didn't think.
I'm sorry, Mr., are you going to still have the motion or are you withdrawing it?
Well, no, I still have the motion.
Okay, all right.
You know, and, you know, I'm going to keep my motion and I think we ought to direct our city manager to, and city attorney to follow this and do what we have to do, complete this.
I don't think I'll support it because I feel like we still don't have, I don't even have the report from staff on their inspection on the building. I don't have a report from the police department. So I can't support this until that happens. And then I can make that decision. Yeah, Ms. Lopez.
I see no reason why he can't, or we can't direct the city manager or the city attorney to give us more information and to look for more information.
But they will once they get the report. So right now, we don't have anything and I really don't feel comfortable discussing this.
In the meantime, they can do research. I mean, that's what attorneys are.
Well, that's when the report comes out, right?
Well, Mayor, Mayor Meehan.
Ms. Minas.
Mayor, I believe the city manager has emphatically stated that he and the city attorney are already on this. There is no reason to beat this anymore as far as that, as far as I'm concerned. We're going over and over on this. Also, Ms. Moore has stated that on her attorney's counsel that they cannot discuss or they are working on it. So until I get something that, after the investigation is done, then I think we can and should go into further discussion. But to go back and, back and forth and over and over and just rehash, you know, some stuff, I think that's all for naught. I think we should just chill out for now until we get the investigation report. We can't do anything. There's nothing for us to do. I think, I think we're in the wind right now. I am.
That's how I feel. All right, Vice Mayor Thomas.
I'll be honest, I don't know enough about this case to be able to say one way or the other whether we're getting the right information or we're getting enough information. But here's what I do know. I know it's under investigation. And how can we expect our city manager or our city attorney to come to us and give us advice or give us information on something that they don't have a full report on yet? They can't come to us and give us advice on what they think we should be doing until they know what they think they should be doing. So I think this is sort of putting the cart before the apples.
The horse.
Where that statement goes. But, you know, so until that police report is completed, then the investigation is out there on exactly what happened, then I think the city manager and the city attorney is going to know. Because right now, it's all conjecture. It is all conjecture. We don't know anything yet until that comes in. And I think it's only fair to our city manager and to our city attorney to have all the facts before they start trying to bring us facts.
Yeah, I agree. And you know, I, I'm hearing that individuals are calling the police department or the officer in charge. So I'm really wondering how this case is going to come out anyway. Because if you start making phone calls, where are you on this investigation? And harassing the officer who's trying to do it accurately, you're talking about people's lives here.
Right, and the bottom line is, I mean, we aren't part of the case. I mean, we aren't part of the case. We're part of being the owners to the building and that's where we fall in all of this. You know, we have to remember that. So, you know, until that investigation occurs, I don't think, now, as far as the leases go, I think that's a very big topic and a very good discussion to have in the future and to figure out that we have that wording in there and exactly, you know, how to protect the city in the future. I totally agree with that. But at this point, I don't think it's appropriate to go forward with anything because there's nothing to go forward with.
I agree.
And Mayor?
All right, Mr. Alfred.
And now, my motion being twisted because I specifically asked the motion to authorize the city manager and city attorney to act as our representatives. We have not asked them for information. We don't expect them to give us information now. I will tell you when the reason this is being brought at this time. Again, council, I will, I will tell you, you were given misinformation before that you acted and made decisions on. We all on this board rely on our staff, and it wasn't them, but they give us correct information. But we need that to make a correct decision up here. So I'm specifically want it on record, and if you want to go against the motion, that's fine. But you'll find out here down the road what I'm talking about because I'm not going to get in, I'm not going to go there. But I want it on record that we were directing our city attorney and our city manager to get back with us when this is done and such. And Mayor, I understand that you weren't going to go with this anyway because even when this all went down, your direct quote was, you know, "It's a great investment. This money is well-spent," but it wasn't. And when you say something, I take it for face value and I go, okay, she probably knows what she's talking about. I can tell you, I know what I'm talking about here. So, I mean, that's up to you. I made my motion and that's it. If you want to go with it, you're more than welcome.
What I'm saying is, we don't have anything to go on. They will come back with that information to us. We don't need your motion.
And we, well, yes, I want it on record.
Okay, all right, Mr. Thomas.
There has been a lot of information that's been out there in Florida today. Also, it was discussed on Bill Mick. So there is a perception that things haven't been handled properly with Honor America. There's a perception. Perception is reality. Now, one thing you learn about leadership and Leadership 101 is when you're a leader of an organization, what goes right with that organization or what goes wrong with that organization, ultimately it comes back on you rightly or wrongly. So I really think the proper thing to do right now, and I would just, I would really beg Ms. Moore to step down as president of Honor America. And then that takes a lot of the pressure off and I think takes you out of the spotlight right now until the investigation is over with. And I think it's the right thing to do as the leader of that organization.
Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Lopez.
My biggest problem is when our staff withhold information. When I voted for that additional money to be spent, I wasn't told that there was a conflict of interest. I brought it up afterwards, once I voted, thinking it's the city building, did not know there was any relationship between Councilwoman Moore and Honor America. If I was told that information, if I was advised of that information, I wouldn't have voted the way I voted. So I don't like the idea that even our own staff is holding information from us.
I don't know, I don't think staff was holding.
Mayor, I'd like to clarify that.
Because, I mean, we had prior mayors on that board. I think Mayor Buckley was president of Honor America and there had been no conflicts with him being, and there were several.
Yes, there was a conflict.
There's a letter from the Ethics Commission right there saying there is a conflict. So that's, I don't care what you used to do. I used to do a lot of the things that I don't do anymore because it wasn't right.
Mayor, three things I'd like to say about that. Because the notion that staff would withhold something that's germane to the conversation is very disturbing to me. First, it's not staff's responsibility to disclose conflicts of interest among members of the city council. It's the city council member's responsibility. Secondly, in this case, the actual proposal to fund that roof project came from Councilwoman Moore openly at this table as a representative of Honor America. She was involved with them. She brought the questions to the table and there was no secret whatsoever that she was involved with Honor America. So there was no hiding of that fact. The third thing is what staff told you that night and on the subsequent nights when it was disclosed, or when it was discussed was, it wasn't your responsibility to pay for that roof and we recommended that you not because the lease said the paying for the roof was Honor America's responsibility. So I just want to be clear, staff's role here in this notion that we were withholding information to somehow make this happen is just not the truth and that's not how all this went down.
So you're saying that it's not the attorney's responsibility to notify the council if there's a possible conflict of interest?
Well, no, that's not what I said, but the attorney can speak to that.
I, I would not typically step in and identify the relationships that people have. I mean, quite honestly, I didn't on that event. I don't know that I fully understood the relationship, but even if I had, I don't know that it would be my place to point out what the relationship is between people. If I know an item is coming before you and I know that somehow you're involved, like when Mayor Meehan's husband owns property, I may call her and say, okay, this is one of those issues that you need to make sure you don't take part in. But typically, I would not interject in the meeting and say, I think you have a. But typically, I would not interject in the meeting and say, "I think you have a relationship here that would violate your ethics."
I think, I disagree with that. I think it's your responsibility to let the city council know whether there's a possible conflict of interest, or any of our city council members on any businesses that are coming in front of us. So, I disagree with you on that.
All right. So, any other further discussion? I have a motion and a second.
I'd like one statement.
Okay, Ms. Moore.
I have kept the city attorney, and I have kept the city manager abreast of everything that has taken place at Honor America. We have held back nothing, so that they knew exactly what had happened, what steps were being taken, and et cetera. We were an open book. So, you wanna call for the vote?
Yeah, but I do wanna make a statement. I won't support this motion, because we don't need this motion. We, we are on standby, waiting for the police report and staff's report on the inspection of the roof. That's why I'm not supporting this.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
I would like to add also that I think it is very important that when information comes in, that we receive the information, you know, in a timely fashion. And I do believe that that is what the city manager and the city attorney plans on doing. Because of that, I don't feel like this motion is actually needed. I think what the motion is wanting and asking for is exactly what will occur and is going to occur, especially now that we've had this discussion. So, I don't think we need it in a motion, so I'm not gonna support the motion at this time.
Okay.
Mayor.
All right, Mr. McNeese.
I need to clarify a couple of things, I think, based on what I'm hearing in the conversation. There is not a report on the inspection of the roof that's waiting to come back to the city council. The roof was, the roof was worked on, there were some deficiencies, it's been worked on again, we don't think it's leaking, it's been inspected. That's not really the issue, although it's related to the issue. There are two things in play here, if you put aside the landlord-tenant issue, which you've already discussed, and the management of the landlord-tenant issue. The other two are the criminal investigation that has to do with the flow of funds from the city council to Honor America, to the staff, to the roofer, and then there is a criminal investigation involved there. The other issue is, from a donor standpoint, did the city get what it expected, and was it properly represented, where your money was going for the roof? How was it spent? Where did it go? That's, I'll call it administrative issue, but it's following up on the responsibilities we have to make sure you donated that money, it was used properly. There's not a report, you know, we're not gathering information on that. We have a pretty good idea where the money went, and we think we know what happened. But that is in abeyance, pretty much, until the criminal investigation is put to bed, or at least filed with the state attorney, and that takes its course, because we don't wanna get in the way of that, chasing around the flow of funds from the administrative standpoint. So, I just wanna sort out these things, because it's been referred to, that you're waiting for a report from us, and you are, yes, but what you're really waiting for is what we will then do to follow up, once the criminal issues, the smoke has cleared on those.
That's right, correct.
I just wanna make sure everyone understands where we are.
Right, and, and that being said, I think that that's what we're waiting for, is, is you to have the information that you can then forward on to us as to whether there's an issue, or there isn't an issue.
And if I could just add on to that, the, it doesn't have to go that way. The reason I prefer it to go that way is because I think that, as a civil matter, if I start investigating the very thing that's being investigated as a criminal matter, I will likely step on the toes of the investigating officer, and I don't wanna do that. I wanna stay out of his investigation, let him conclude it. I have time under the civil law, civil causes of actions that I would bring to do that. I'm not in fear of not, of missing my statute of limitations, so I have plenty of time to do that. If I was getting close to that statute of limitation period, there would be things that I could do, but I really don't want to, because I don't wanna step on the toes of the investigating officer.
Mayor.
It's just more prudent.
What is the statute of limitations?
There are a number of different types of causative actions, so it depends on what we go forward on.
Okay, all right. Yeah, Mr. Elfrin.
Again, my motion being twisted. What I am saying is, I am asking that we authorize the city manager and city attorney to act on it as our representatives and report back to us when, when it's appropriate. I'm not asking you to go out tomorrow, we've all been very patient. But I will say, the reason for my motion is me, specifically, and some council members have been given false information that you will find out later, and I want it on record, how we stand collectively as a council, and that we will go after people that defraud our city. So, again, if you don't wanna go with the motion, that's fine, but that's, I want it on record.
Oh, wow. Now, are we state attorney now, or, I thought we were city council.
What do you mean? No, we're the, we're the governing body of Melbourne.
I agree.
And, and you know what? It was, we, we, it's taxpayer money that we are responsible for.
I agree with that.
So, we're not, no one said we're state attorney. Again, I know how you're gonna vote on this, because your prior comments have been the second of the motion on this. That's fine, but I want it on record because of poor information that you've all gotten. Again, that's my motion, I made it, and if I have a second, we'll move on. Second.
Yeah, there is a second, okay. Vice Mayor Thomas.
So, I think I'm confused. Can you explain to me what exactly this motion is going to allow to occur? What's gonna occur with this motion?
Okay, with this, okay, with this motion, we are saying that we are empowering our city manager and city attorney to recover these funds when it's time, okay? And to, and to prosecute criminally and civilly, administratively, those that defrauded our city when it's time. Again, it's not about doing it tomorrow or the next day. What I'm saying is, the reason I'm bringing this motion is because I've been given misinformation up here that I will not disclose, because it will taint the criminal investigation. So, that's why I'm, I'm making this motion.
So, on that, which I, I understand, on that, wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be smarter to wait for that information to technically be done and investigated and be out there, and then bring that to us and say, "A, B, C, and D occurred, this is the reason why we need to go and, and, and have our city go ahead and do, get that money back for us." But we don't know what that A, B, C, and, I mean, you may know what that A, B, C, and D is, but I certainly don't know.
There's a, and actually, yes and no, and I'll, and I'll, and I'll explain that one. There is a point to a criminal investigation when you have to have a victim, when you have to do basically an affidavit and say, "If it's grand theft or whatever, there was a victim." We're at that point now, where I want it on record that we're gonna pursue this when it is time. And again, we can say, we can wait, we can wait, whatever, but I want it on record, because when this comes out later, you will completely understand why I'm making this motion.
And I'm not doubting that, but, so you're basically saying that we, as councils, the city as a whole, will be the victim, is what you're saying. But at this point, we're not the victim, because the investigation hasn't been completed.
That's correct. And, and before that's happened, and like I said, if, if law enforcement, the state attorney decides that we have to do an affidavit as, as a, you know, part of the investigation, then we told the city manager that, yeah, that is fine, that we, that we have authorized him to do that.
Well, I, I understand that, and I would certainly, once it is known the facts are out there and the facts are known, I would certainly support that and certainly be behind that. But I don't have the facts to support that at this point. That's the only reason why.
All right, let's call a question. Those in favor of the motion, state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose?
Nay.
Nay. You, the motion died.
You have a roll call vote?
Excuse me, I make that decision, Mr. Elfrin.
I'm asking a question, Mayor.
Okay.
I said, can I have, please, a roll call vote?
All right. Roll call vote, please. Councilmember Moore.
Nay.
Councilmember Minus.
Nay.
Councilmember Elfrin.
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Councilmember Tim Thomas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Debbie Thomas.
Nay.
Mayor Meehan. I vote nay. Motion dies. Item number 29, council action, appointment of the vice mayor for 2017, 2018. I do wanna state, thank you very much, Vice Mayor Thomas, you did an excellent job. And anytime I couldn't be out there, you stepped up for me, so.
Thank you. I have to say, it was, it was a great honor to be able to be vice mayor. I really enjoyed it, and I really learned a lot, and thank you for all your help, Mayor, and thank you, rest of council. All of you guys were really great and patient and kind with me while I played that role.
You did a great job, thank you. All right, council, what is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Ms. Moore.
I would like to appoint Yvonne Minus as our new vice mayor, and I can give you the reasons, because she is out there, she attends everything that she can possibly attend, and I feel she would make a good vice mayor.
All right. All right, so you, I'll second that motion. Very good. And those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose?
Nay.
And I vote aye, and the motion passes.
Congratulations, Yvonne.
Yep, congratulations, Vice Mayor Minus. Okay. Item number 30 is appointment of three council members to the airport authority. I'd like to make a motion that the three that are on the board be reappointed.
A second.
Okay. I had two seconds, and I, I don't know whether you or Mr. Thomas.
I give it to him.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion for approval.
I assume they all want to continue?
Yeah, that's another thing. Do you all wanna continue?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, I have a motion to approve the existing members, second by Mr. Thomas. Discussion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? And I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item 31. All right, let me get to there. Item 31A, appointment of one member to the library board. Counsel, you have it in your package, recommended to reappoint Janet Cool. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion to reappoint Janet Cool by Ms. Moore, second by, all right, who did the second? Ms. Minus?
Ms. Minus.
All right, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? And I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item 31B. All right, because this package was large, this has been a real challenge. Okay, not to, all right, so, we're gonna appoint three members to the zoning board of adjustments, and it's in your package, council, what is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Minus.
I move for reappointment of Mike Nowlan, Patty Costres, Sisgrava, and Rafendra Shah.
Second.
All right, I have a motion to reappoint the three members by Ms. Minus, second by Mr. Thomas. Discussion. Seeing none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? And I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item 31C, appointment of two regular members and two alternate members to the planning and zoning board.
Let me get down to it.
Yeah, let me, all right.
Name?
Yeah, Vice, uh, excuse me, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a slight adjustment.
I recommend council reappoint Alan King and Edward Caruzzi as regular members.
Second.
All right, I have a motion for, to reappoint Alan King and Ed Caruzzi, second by Vice Mayor Minus. Discussion. Seeing none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? And I vote aye, and the motion passes. Item 31C, second item, council, what is your pleasure?
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Minus.
Are we at the housing?
Not yet.
No.
Okay.
I move for reappointment of Carol Hudgens as the first alternate member.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Vice Mayor Minus for approval of Carol Hudgens, and second by Ms. Thomas. Discussion. Seeing none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? And I vote aye, and the motion passes. Third item. Now, this one, we will appoint one of the following applicants.
Mayor.
Of Ms. Thomas.
I would like to appoint through the nomination process Jessica Freeman as the second alternate member.
Okay. Any other individuals? All right, seeing none.
I'll second that.
That was a nomination, we'll close and.
One nomination, okay.
So, we're, okay, so I need a motion to appoint Ms. Jessica Freeman.
Motion.
All right.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Thomas, second by Ms. Thomas. Discussion. Jessica Freeman. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? And I vote, vote aye, and the motion passes. Item, oh, excuse me, item 31D is appointment of two members to the Melbourne Housing Authority.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Minus.
I move for the appro, approve the mayor's reappointment of Judith Doyle and Gloria Durant.
Second.
All right, I have a motion to reappoint Judith Doyle and Gloria Durant by Vice Mayor Minus, second by Ms. Moore. Discussion. Now, I will like to make a comment on this. I understand Gloria Durant, for whatever reason, had, did not attend as many meetings as she, as I would like, so I hope that she improves her attendance. I don't have any other nominations or any other applicants, so I just wanna state that. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? And I vote aye, and the motion passes. Next is 31.1, and this is the blue memo, and request for emergency approval to retain the services of Logan Diving and Salvage Company to repair the exposed and suspended pipe along the 20-inch subaquous water main crossing of the 192 Causeway, $315,000. Who's gonna report on this? Oh, there you are. Okay, sorry about that, okay. Ms. Spagnoli.
Jennifer Spagnoli, Utilities Engineer. This is an emergency request for approval to retain the services of Logan Diving and Salvage Company to repair the exposed and suspended pipe along the 20-inch subaquous water main crossing at the 192 Causeway. On October 30th, 2017, city manager approved an emergency request to hire Logan Diving and Salvage to inspect the 20-inch subaquous water main at the 192 Causeway. Logan was already in the area working for the city of Cocoa, and there aren't very many other companies that have this type of expertise, so while they were here, we wanted to have them take a look. We had a previous underwater survey in February of 2016, which noted a couple of sections of exposed pipe, which were under the bridge, not in the area where there's boats, but there was not any notes that it needed to be fixed, but just, it was noted, and we would monitor it. But with the storm and having Hurricane Irma and what the city of Cocoa was going through, we felt we wanted to have it checked again. And based on the new survey, which they dove and took some underwater videos of, we have six locations along the 2,500-foot crossing, where the 20-inch is exposed above the river bottom, and in some locations, it's actually suspended, which means it has no material underneath it. There's one area where there's three feet below the pipe with no material. This, this pipe is Ball and Socket River pipe, and when it was installed, it was expected to be laid down on the bottom of the river, and it does not have joint restraints that we would have today, so it's not something I, that staff wants to wait on. Logan Diving and Salvage recommends completing these repairs as soon as possible. I submitted a permit application with the Army Corps of Engineers, and based on, again, what's been in the newspaper, and they understand the, that this needs to get done quickly, it can't be a long process, and should be, I should have a permit within a week or two. In discussions with other municipalities about similar repairs, because the cost was significant at $315,000, it was, it's understood that the time and effort that's needed to complete the work, which will require certified divers, skilled labor, dive boats, workboats, and specialty equipment, the cost is reasonable with other repairs that have taken place. And Logan needs two weeks to mobilize, and they could complete the work within four weeks. And funding is not budgeted, so approval of a budget transfer from the water and sewer so approval of a budget transfer from the water and sewer contingency would be required to the water distribution repair and maintenance water line. And this budget transfer does not change the total amount of the water and sewer fund. Therefore, staff recommends approval of a budget transfer from the water and sewer contingency account 94100536-590310 in the amount of $315,000 to the water distribution, distribution repair and maintenance water lines account and recommends approval to retain the services of Logan Diving and Salvage Company Jacksonville, Florida in the amount of $315,000 utilizing operating account water distribution, repair, and maintenance water lines.
All right, thank you, Ms. Spagnoli. The fact that the Army Corps of Engineers approved this this fast, what you said, in two weeks?
Well, I spoke to them and submitted the application the day before Thanksgiving and spoke with the manager in the office, who thought it could be turned around shortly, but with the holidays.
Yeah, oh, it could have been faster?
Well, I don't have it yet, but I'm hopeful that I'm going to have it in two weeks.
I hope so, that's, I hope so. All right, any other discussion? I think this is a good project, for sure. We don't want the Indian Atlantic folks driving, or driving their boats over here, wanting water. All right, council, what is your pleasure? Item 31.1.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Minus.
I move for approval of a budget transfer from water and sewer contingency 94100536-590310 in the amount of $315,000 to water distribution, repair, and maintenance water lines,
Second.
All right, I have a motion for approval of item number 31.1, as stated in council's package, by Vice Mayor Minus, second by Mr. Thomas. Discussion.
No, Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Alfred.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, from our staff, good work on this preventative maintenance. We definitely want, we don't want this thing to rupture, but especially the city manager, way to look out for this and, and take care of this. I like this, so, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? And I vote aye, and the motion passes. Very good.
We need to do the second part of that, Mayor.
Yeah. Second.
Oh, here we go, number, second recommendation.
Yes, Mayor.
All right, Ms. Moore.
I move for approval to retain the services of Logan Diving and Salvage Company from Jacksonville, Florida in the amount of $315,000 utilizing operating account water distribution, repair, and maintenance water lines,
Second.
All right, I have a motion for approval of item 31.1 on the second bullet. I guess it would be the second bullet.
I don't know.
Usually it's A and B. All right, so, okay, so by Ms. Moore, second by, who seconded that? By, Ms. Thomas. Discussion. Seeing none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? And I vote aye, and the motion passes. Very good. All right. So next is item 32 is petitions, remonstrances, and communications. Council, any, anything for the good of the order.
Where's Eric?
Mayor.
I don't know, but.
The what?
Where's Eric?
Yeah, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Thomas, I mean Vice Mayor Minus.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. December 14th, next Thursday, the second Thursday in December, is the annual Christmas party for the Police Community Relations Council. Please just come, just bring two canned goods, is all we're asking. Before, we've asked you to bring your favorite covered dish. If you like, you still can, but, you know, we're going to have that all covered. Just, we just ask, if you will, to bring two canned goods. And I'd like to see all of council there at Lipscomb Community Center.
Okay.
Okay, this has been sponsored.
I have one, all right, I got Mr. Alfred. Mr. Alfred?
Yeah, I want to say real quick, thanks to councilmember Tim Thomas. To my understanding, the Melbourne Light Parade was short a lot of funding, even quite a bit of funding. And he also went out and found a couple businesses to sponsor it. So we will have the Melbourne Light Parade, but good work. And that's just proactive work by our council members to go out and work with businesses to put these things together for citizens. But good work, councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. I do want to clarify that this parade is not going through downtown. It's going in the outskirts of downtown. So you'll find that some of them probably won't donate, but some will. So it's just, you know, the way it is. Okay, so Ms. Moore.
The UGALI, CRA, and EGAD, and Main Street is having their Christmas tree lighting December 1st, which is their first Friday, which is this week, at 6:00 in the square.
Okay, because we also have Lipscomb.
Yeah.
Tree lighting, that's, I know. Usually we go to UGALI and then we race down to.
We can do it. We did it last year.
Okay, all right, Mr. McNeese.
We'll just let the police department know that there will be several of us.
No, no, there's no, no.
Can we get a police escort?
Yeah, right. All right, Mr. McNeese.
Just for council's information, we're only probably two city council agendas away from implementing an automated process by which your agenda package will be created, which will be much less paper. Staff will be able to put things right in their computers. The processing will be much easier. Because that's coming and because of the sheer volume of the paper for today's agenda, I, being one of the oldest, probably the oldest dog at the table, decided I could learn a new trick. And I took one of the rejected city council former tablet computers and had the agenda loaded into it so I could use it tonight to see how that worked for me. It actually worked really well. I actually am very happy to give up the paper now that I've used a tablet. So for the, for the other, dare I say, dinosaurs at the table, I tried it out and it's working pretty well. So if, as we go further into the paperless process, we'll encourage each of you to, to give it a go and.
When our tablet works.
When our tablet works.
Okay.
It's wonderful.
But, Ms. McNeese, there's one thing I know Rebecca had discussed, and that is when she does the page number, she puts the item number, but she couldn't do it this time. But I don't know the rest of you, but I need that item number and the page number.